Five o'clock. Meeting is called to order. Please turn on your microphones. Roll call please. Frank Hampton. Oh, we don't have Hampton anymore. We have Chris Barkle there. Barkle? Chadley?
Yes.
Clemmish?
Here.
Michael?
Yeah.
Schultz?
Here.
Williams?
Who's here?
Oh, man, I'm reading. Here.
Keely?
Here.
Harns?
Here.
You try that other microphone.
Okay. Do we have any addition or corrections to last one's minutes?
I'll move this up. Sorry.
Good. We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Do we have any items to be added to the agenda? Okay, Jessica just mentioned that the last two items on the flats will be deleted from tonight's agenda. Um, seven, at 7:30 PM, the flats?
Both flats?
Well, there was three.
There was one added.
Yeah, there was one added, so they're both logged. And look, um, one was a preliminary attack, one's lot two, and they both are removed.
Lot 16 on Sundance is removed.
No, that one's taken.
Move approval of the agenda with the corrections.
Okay, so we have a motion to be in a second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Hey, we're gonna have to go person by. Well, I guess we wouldn't have to. Are there any conflict of interest declarations for tonight's agenda by anyone?
No, I have none.
Okay, so Doug Chadley, um, which item are you referring to?
Uh, the top one.
So that's the morass, the tell equal to. All right, thank you. Okay, next item. Bryce Morgan and White Crane Estates Conditional Use Permit. Applicants are requesting a conditional use permit for dwellings to flat, two-family duplex in a moderate-density rural residential district R2. Said property is legally described as lots 28, 29, and 30 Prestview Home Subdivision in the northeast quarter of Section 21, T-93 North, Range 56 West, here an after referred to as Utica South Township, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota. The E911 address is to be determined. Lilac Lane, Yankton, South Dakota. Is there someone here to speak to that? Thank you. Okay, so tell us about your plans.
Oh, I thought we did what?
And that's just one?
Yeah.
One of the three to those lots.
Each lot will have its own plot. Okay, so it's not just one.
Yeah.
So one in lot 28, one in 29, and one in 30?
Correct.
Prestview State, so there's three. Do they each have designated parking?
Yeah.
So are they, are you going to have private option for garbage? Do you want to take the thing, or are they just responsible for the room?
Uh, it sounds like we would find someone, let them pick up and touch the, the closing. And there's a couple comments.
You have any questions from the board? You have any questions for us? All right, then I need to ask for questions from the board. Was we? Done? All right, thank you, sir. All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this particular conditional use permit?
Would just like to know what the intention is.
Okay, if you want to speak, I'm sorry, I need to come up and talk to the microphone. I see your name, if you would, please.
Uh, my name is Kathy Tierney. I live in Florida, by the way. And my only question is, is what is the intended use for these? Are you wanting to build them in some? Or your intention is to build them in length and amount?
Live in them.
Excuse me?
Live in them.
You're gonna live in three different complexes?
I bought one of the lots, the other two are still with White Crane.
Oh, so you only have one lot?
I personally have.
I see. Okay, so you're planning on building one duplex?
Yes.
Um, thank you. Okay. Anyone else would like to ask a question or make a statement on this particular current application?
Yeah, you don't see any issue with this. It's just a conditional use permit required for moderate-density for multi-family home.
Correct. Um, back when they originally did this preliminary plot back in like 2015, there was one block of lots that they kind of intended to, to have twin homes on. These are, there's already two out there, and these three lots are in that same block of lots, so.
And this is just a single lot for us?
Yeah, pretty single lots with two blocks.
All right, time for public input. Last call. All right, time for public input is now closed. Do we have any more discussion on the board, or I would entertain a motion?
So move.
We have to say you're moving in favor of?
I'm moving in favor of conditional use permit.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, do you have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit? Hopeable viewing. Barkle?
Yes.
Heaven?
Yes.
Clemmish?
Yes.
Michael?
Yeah.
Schultz?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Keely?
Yes.
Harns?
Yes.
Donna, are you with us yet? Does anybody know if she's ready to come? She can, okay, all right. I'm just asking, just in case she came online and didn't know she was there. All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda. SAT Enterprises is looking for a variance. Applicant is requesting a variance of the minimum side yard requirement of 25 feet to 17 feet. A variance of eight feet in a commercial district. Said property is legally described as the east 150 feet, of the west 200 feet, except the south 942.85 feet in the south half of the west half of the west half of the northwest border in Section 15. T-93 North, Range 56 West, to the 50 PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. Less highways and roads here an after referred to as Utica South Township, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota. The E91 address is 3703 West 8th Street, Yankton, South Dakota. Is there someone here to speak for this application? Thank you.
My name is Tom Maker. I'm owner of Stringers.
Yeah, that would be great.
Uh, N O E C K R. So what we're doing is if we're standing on a piece on the irrigate, maybe irrigate, or raise, or destroy the F piece on to the door. It's not, uh, it's not going to need further east and all towards that, if we go to the north. It's 13 by six, it's the addition.
Did you point out on, on that?
But doesn't going for a piece of all this comes out, so I'll get this building.
Thank you.
According to this, does two additions going on or just one?
There's another addition for, for a kitchen addition to the, uh, oh, if you want to add, put that up for you. On the west side of the building, there's a fence, a fence to take right there.
The kitchen additions are in the group. It's just on the same plan. It was, it was permitted, but this one is just for the?
Just the one.
Just the one. Yes.
Is this one on the corner? Is that the addition to the building? Pause, or is it just that same area? I'm sorry, is it like an overhead area? Is it like close to the building? What are you talking about? What we're asking?
Yes.
Your box, please. Oh, 1055, yes. The lot, the irrigate from the stomach, that's just very expensive. I have no plan from the inside. There's no doors or windows or anything on this. Good, bye.
Okay, do we have any other questions? And it doesn't, it's lined up with the previous edge, so it's not like you're encroaching farther in the wood. It's lined up with previous edge of the building.
I think from the, from the, on the north side, there's 170, 170 feet of lot there.
All right, any other questions before we can take our leave?
So basically, the, the variance you asked is for, for the 25 feet to the 17 feet.
Mm-hmm.
17 feet is where the district building already.
Right.
Where I just have that.
Right. It's just matching up, yeah. And with 17 feet left, that's still adequate room for emergency vehicles. Should they ever need to get in there, that you get through there yet? So it's not like you're getting right up to another building where you can't get through there with fire handouts or something, should be pleased with. Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak about this application? Okay, hearing done. Time for public input on this application is now closed. Do we have any other questions?
Question?
Jessica, I guess mostly. Or Gary. So this is up for the, this variance request is for that east fence line. The building already is 17 feet, call it, instead of the 25-foot side yard.
Yeah.
Do we need one for the front of the building, though?
Um, he's got enough room from the front line to the?
Because this is commercial, correct? Makes sense.
Yeah, he's got it.
I don't think this place does.
No, it's just commercial. He's got 170 feet from the front.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Yeah.
But that's, what I've got, it's hard to tell exactly where that lot goes.
Is that 170 feet after the addition?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, which, which the front yard is 100 feet.
Okay, that was my only concern.
I'll question ones. Any other questions before someone might make a motion?
Glad business is going so good, you need to expand.
I will, we accept the variance.
Do we have a motion to accept?
Second that.
All right, motion and a second. Roll call vote when you're ready. Heaven?
Yes.
Clemmish?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Keely?
Yes.
Harns?
Yes.
Barkle?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda. Just Kitting Farms LLC Rezone. Applicant is requesting a rezone from moderate-density rural residential district R2 to a low-density rural residential district R1. Said property is legally described as block seven of year-run subdivision in the west half of the southeast quarter. Subtract A, Section 1, T-93 North, Range 57 West, of the 50 PM, here an after referred to as a Viscount South Township, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota. The E911 address is 43354 310th Street, Yankton, South Dakota.
Uh, Matt and Bonnie Missam. They're here to rezone that piece to, uh, build a house and, uh, a little apartment. Seven, it's short of seven. And the location where this current, on the front, all right.
What kind of creatures do you want to have? We have goats, we have Pico Miko, as well as Nigerian dorks. So are goats really the convenience of the animal world, as I've heard? Uh, they can be.
Gold, gold?
Uh, you know what? That could be a possibility.
I remember the Neaples and stuff.
Could you start the last name for me, please? W I N S A N D. Got a nice place?
So I understand you've got purchase agreement. And a part of that is that this action is pending. Right. That's why you're here, I think, for the current line, so, okay. Uh, Gary, did you, any chance, look at the other parcels joining that? If you look at, at, uh, rezone? Yeah, all those surrounding ones?
So everything to the south is all our one. Everything in yellow, there's our one, so. So you can see, there's quite a, quite a bunch there on one area.
Would it make sense to, uh, because those are the west of this property, are like seven acres and greater. They're definitely more than five acres.
Right.
Would it make sense to look at? I can see to the east, that's, you know, obviously not going to be our one, but.
Yeah, if it, once they come in to develop or do anything more, we would certainly look at changing those possibly to.
I just, to me, the issue is that if we, I'm not against this at all, if they, I'm, I'm just, just stop building one, one part of them and then all the others. If we could move, you know, at some, at that point, move everything probably to the north of that property and to the west, it's a whole lot. Would be a better move than just to put that one little spot.
But I wondered, didn't we have any contact with those owners or?
Some over here today.
Little west ones?
More the ones.
Yeah, the west, okay.
But the problem with that is that it really limits, you know, future development, because we, we don't know what, say, the property to the north of some of those properties. Well, I'm planning on developing them into wanting for lots. And now we're designing, and now we're effective variance for all of those. So I understand totally what you're saying.
But when you look at the property of his piece, it is pretty wild. There's that big valley going through there, so I mean, it's really not suited for that, his pieces.
It makes sense, and I understand, then it's, you know, that makes sense, but.
But it, this is pretty wild.
We're gonna, I mean, we have that, that property on 81 that the guy getting in the money to rezone eight months ago, and we still haven't got that rezone, because I didn't want a spot zone, and he's in a predicament, and I. I think this is a case where, you know, we, we don't like the spot zone, but it seems to me
To me, to me, yeah, the issue with the goal is, where you already have, where that two-year avenue of getting way is, where they're at the dome, there's already plenty of small lots there. Are they going to want to have someone on either side of them to plot a wide or lots all the way around that two?
No, I'm, I'm, you know, I don't, I don't like the property around there really well, but it's, you know, are you going to want to be surrounded by fifty houses? That's what I'm saying.
Well, it's just the hobby farm, it's only, you know, ten animal units, so we're not talking about tons and tons of animals.
Yeah.
No, but if he's, does, to say that it goes to, to development, that, that he's saying, not, not, not that, that one. No, I'm not against that at all. I'm just, what I'm saying is, my concern is that you don't, we, we moved, zoning your piece there out away from, you know, to be like the rest of the yellow. But you've got pink all around you, except for, uh, south.
And when you look in the map, the, the ones that are east is a, is a bottom part, they have animals. The mybals are ones that are the last, that triangle there, the piece Gary Wood owns, uh, that's just undeveloped. Ones to the back are already, they're already homes. Let's do that one. So, um, you know, a real spot left to develop would be the one that's giving me that they own, so.
I don't, I don't have a problem with, with doing it, it's just the fact that we have to look out down the road a little bit, or what's going to happen with that existing property that's around it, or hasn't, that's probably, you know.
Just sort of the taller thing.
Do we have any other questions before I ask for public input? All right. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on this particular permit application? Okay, thank you.
Um, my name's Adrian. My mom, and I own seven acres to the west of that lot. And I guess my only question for that is how many goat? I guess, you don't want it to be inundated. I hear that it's from lately sales, that kind of stuff. Haven't I heard of daughter, though, these old pet goats, that story? But I just don't want it to be overrun. Like you say, ten animal units, but how many goats are one animal unit in a thing? I get a question, I guess. Okay, so like, for the whole thing, you'd be like, oh, ten? Thank you.
Hey, anyone else?
Hi, my name is Gary Wood. Um, we live to the west of this property, and we're, we're selling this lobby fund as well. I would love to save that one. We're going to be able to, well, that. We just like the two eighty-six, two years ago, which is less than half mile.
Yes. My cousin just made the comment that we wouldn't mind if we were, um, someone's on our one here. So if that would make you guys feel better about giving them their condition for what, rezone here. We don't have a problem with that, and if Gary doesn't have a problem with it in the backyard, that, that kind of lets you rezone that whole area back there.
Thank you.
We'd have to look at that, that's down the road, that's here on the agenda and stuff, but just, thank you.
Okay, anyone else in the audience? Okay, hearing done, time for public input is now closed. We have a motion from the board.
I, I think before we do this rezone, we're going through. You know, section. Eighteen oh nine amendments and rezoning. This is where we need to dig into our comprehensive plan and at least find. You know, a couple, I think, areas. And I'm, I mean, I found comprehensive plan on page, page sixty-eight, and it talks about. You know, housing and, you know, maintaining an affordable range of housing options. And continued development of small rural subdivisions and scattered single-family homes. That's in our housing chapter, page sixty-eight. We, we have to find, you know.
Well, it seems like it fits the neighborhood quite well, and the geography makes it impractical to try to directly smaller lots. Sell, and that's not what their intention is either, the neighbors. Are in favor of it, and they're even willing to be rezoned as well. So I think it fits well with the area. You know, it's a rural area, there's already hobby farms in the area.
What is that? The hobby farm there actually is forty-five acres. Is that right?
Well, it has to be R one.
Yeah, but I'm not, yeah, but I think there's.
Yeah, R one's a minimum five acres.
Five acres, yeah. And they've got seventeen. So there's more than sometimes that.
I do think, I do think Dennis is right, though, because. That puts me like, that area is going to be rezoned probably fairly easy.
You know, I, I think, you know, I agree with what you're saying, that if we were going to come in and rezone that commercial. Or something that was a lot less compat- compatible.
In the neighborhood.
You know, we're going from one residential to another residential. That's not as big of a jump. As commercial or industry or something like that, where a business that is not compatible with that neighborhood could bingo. So, you know, just keep that in mind. I understand what you guys are saying, and I agree. But it, it is going from one residential zoning to another residential zoning. And the purpose of that is to allow a hobby farm, which is well over the five acres.
This is a little off topic, but it fits in, so I've asked Gary, he's. In all the free time that he has. Going through lots within the county that don't, that's either that are split, or don't necessarily fit the way they end up being zoned. Drawing that straight lines, and we got the. Software today to really go by parcel. So he's slowly identifying things that may be rezoned improperly. And we'll, it's working to compile a list, and then we'll contact those owners and, and look at, have a mass. Rezone throughout the county at some point, so this would be an area that. Later on would probably fit that.
I don't, I. You know, R one, you know, Chris, originally probably went all the way out, except a lot of the houses, no product, or anything in the area. Original map was built, that's kind of where it was, and you kind of thought, well, they're going to build along that. Four thirty-four, that's the road. Comes down there, that's where a lot of it all is going up, that thing, initially. That was drawn that way because of, there was nothing out in there at that time.
I guess go back and comment the amnesty on section eighteen oh nine amendments resuming documentation. Uh, from the applicant. Been completed. Completed amendment and no change requests is there, reasons stated are in there. Public hearing notice has been given. For the public hearing. We need to make findings that the requirements. Section had been met by the applicant for an amendment or change in zone to include the reasons set forth. Just by a recommendation to improve. Amendment or change in zone will make possible the reason to use the land, building, structure. The recommendation to grant the amendment or change in zones. Will be in harmony with the general purpose intended for them. Recommendation of approval will not be injurious to neighborhood or otherwise detrimental. No condition for amendment or change in zone shall be recommended for approval unless, by commission binds up the condition situation or intended use of property. Concern is unique required or necessary as to make reasonably practically amended, amended for change in zone. And then we must put in our findings, like the comprehensive plan, which then was referred to. Any specific rules governing the land uses. Zoning district regulation, which we have in all of these discussions. That's back to provision arrangement and debate concerning the following are applicable. Certification of compliance with all ordinances and regulations regarding licensing and zoning, health, public access, build, fire prevention, other applicable ordinances and regulations. Ingress needs to stop right away, party, refuse, service areas, utilities, screening and buffering. Signs that many required yards and other spaces, and general compatibility with the adjacent properties in the district.
Yes, I made a motion to include the rezone for modern density, real.
Can you put in the findings of that?
Yeah, um, and.
That, okay.
In, in compliance with the comp plan. Page sixty-eight, and you know, continued development of rural subdivisions and scattered single-family homes. Maintaining an affordable range of housing options. And encouraging the use of housing lots with this in the infrastructure.
And we can also mention that there's already hobby farms in the area.
It's compatible with the neighborhood and the adjacent.
All right. Got a motion, can we have a second?
That's right, we can do it.
Yes. All right, roll call vote, we're ready. Clemmich?
Yes.
Michael? Schultz?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
Barful?
Yes.
Heavenly?
Yes.
Hey, we'll just carry. Next item, Dutch Kitting Farms LLC conditional use permit. Applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a hobby farm in a low-density rural residential district. Said property is legally described as block seven of Tier Run subdivision in the west half. Of the southeast border, except tract A, section one. T ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west of the fifty M, herein after referred to as the Siskopla South Township, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota. The E nine one address. E nine one one. Address is four three three five four, three hundred tenth Street, Yankton, South Dakota. Okay. Are we going to make them come up again and talk about the time?
All right, we do.
I think you've already discussed, yeah.
You're going to have goats?
Yes, we have a very small herd, um, we have twenty-two Pico's, that includes our buck and goat. And then we have Nigerian dwarfs, which is.
So can we? Make a, decide if we're building all kinds of, you know, all the runs?
We will have, we will utilize at least ten acres for, um, that'll be fenced off for them, for the orange grounds as well. Yeah, and we do, we will be building a barn as well, yeah.
They'll leave out a bunch of brush, you gotta let them.
Yeah, I don't either have any signs or business or anything.
We'll just have our farm.
Yeah, I do like that name.
Most of the city as well.
Actually, yes.
And most of them are paid up, they pick up on. They're spread out from Northern Montana, Minnesota. Our stock that we have on the people's side is all pretty.
Just, just sure that they leave goat there, or?
The key, sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
We can smell them.
We actually have not done that yet. Typically, that's if you're registered girls, and typically sometimes there's a bigger dairy goat, too.
But our kids don't.
Uh, Nicole guy, that's exactly what I was thinking.
There's, there's, there's.
Any other questions before I ask for public input? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this? Conditional use permit for a hobby farm?
I'm Brooks, excuse me, I'm Brooks Yuduski, and then on four.
Sorry.
I'm Brooks Yuduski, I live up on four three three nine four, which is right at the top of three ten and four thirty-four. Only thing I would like to mention, I'm not against this hobby farm, I think it's a neat deal, um, it's something that that property needs, I think. But the one thing it needs to be addressed, I don't think that a lot of people realize, and Doug might be one of them that would. Uh, that road is unbelievable amount of traffic that is not maintained by the county, that's maintained by most of the people that live out there. Uh, in the ten years I've lived there, I think that's been taken care of maybe once or twice. By the county, so we clean the snow off of it. Uh, county doesn't clean the snow, they don't lay the gravel, they don't play it. Um, and it's just that much extra traffic that comes across that road, plus we get plenty from the west already, so. I just wanted to throw that out there so everybody kind of knows.
Thank you.
Do you guys have a road development plan whatsoever, or is it just kind of hither nither?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hither nither? Is it, is it, there's no kind of road development plan, or?
No. Friend, I did this, it was a matter of a few years ago, when I moved out there ten years ago, that didn't work very well, so I kind of dropped it. Very, very negative the whole way through. Um, I'm not going to keep pursuing something when it's that negative throughout the whole neighborhood, so. It's something that needs to happen, I, I, I know that, and I actually spirited that out for about a year. And that was about enough of that, so.
I think there was a development down there. Off the sprinters. Which is, got out of the county and made their own.
Well, I do believe, even to the rest of us, uh. Was that Spring Meadows Road or something like that, they, they have one there. Now, that's worked very well for that, for that. What's that?
Cedar Hills.
Cedar Hill, yeah, Cedar Hills Road. So that's worked out very well for them, but again, I tried this about ten years ago, and I just did not, it didn't pan out very well at all, so.
Okay, just curious.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this permit? Okay, hearing done, time for public input is now closed, we have a motion. Or additional discussion from the board.
You said this question, until this is actually rezoned, we, we can recommend this to go. For approval, but until this is rezoned, we can't actually.
Right.
Grant it.
Does it have a couple of items in front of them? Of us?
No, we can, we can recommend it on, with, to, to get enough of the rezone, I. But to rezone, we're going to have two.
Correct.
Two hearings.
Yeah, same thing.
It's like changing the order.
You can stipulate, yeah, with, with the rezone approval.
It doesn't take double months to do that.
Yeah, the rezone.
Because it's going to be read twice. Just because it gets approached here, then it's going to go up to one of the top commissioners. Just see that.
I knew a, move approval on additional use permit, uh. On the condition of, uh. Of that lot getting rezoned, uh, in R one.
Oh, second.
So we have a motion in a second, roll call vote when you're ready. Michael? Schultz? Yes. Williams?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
Barful?
Yes.
Heavenly?
Yes.
Clemmich?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, Velocitel AT&amp;T conditional use permit. Applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a communications tower. Said property is legally, legally described as Bismans tract four. Is planted in book F ten. Page twenty-two, accepting there from. The east five hundred ninety point three zero feet. Of the south, five hundred ninety point three zero feet. Of Bismans tract four, as shown on survey, located in the north half. And accepting the east five hundred ninety point three zero feet. Of the north, five hundred ninety point three zero feet of section twelve, T ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west of the fifty M, Yankton County, South Dakota. Less highways and roads herein after referred to as Siskopla South Township, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota. The E nine one one address is three nine eight Wildflower Road, Yankton, South Dakota. Do we have the AT&amp;T Velocitel rep here?
Good evening, we're going to tag team this, um, tonight, so my name is Cheryl Riley. I try not to, classes are finding out, so you should be fine. Uh, my name's Cheryl Riley, I'm the state president for AT&amp;T for South Dakota, and appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to talk about this site. I wanted to provide a little background on the site, and then Brian's going to talk more about some of the processes and some of the technical issues about this. So we, uh, decided that three ninety-eight Wildflower Road, or, and we know it as the Lewis and Carr Tower. And importantly, this is part of the AT&amp;T FirstNet infrastructure, and I do have some handouts on what FirstNet is, about that, I'll give it a knock out, I'm sorry, I don't. Find out. FirstNet is the first nationwide wireless communications press line that's dedicated to America's first responders and public safety community. It was mandated by Congress, and as a result of the tragic communication problems that were experienced during nine eleven. It's designed to strengthen and modernize public safety communications, helping first responders connect to the critical connection that they need. FirstNet is built with AT&amp;T and our public-private partnership. With the First Responder Network Authority, FirstNet Authority, which is an independent agency within the federal government. With the FirstNet network, public safety will get a dedicated cell phone. That provides highly secure communications. First responders will get preemption and priority on the AT&amp;T network. And so it's, it's a really a big win for first responders. AT&amp;T and the FirstNet Authority work very closely with Governor Dennis DeGard Office. And public safety officials throughout the state to identify areas that were in need of coverage. We work hand in hand with public safety community to understand their needs for the network. This really, this network in South Dakota. Was designed by public safety in South Dakota, where the AT&amp;T didn't just. Come in and decide where we want to dispose these towers. To secure FirstNet, and rather, we worked hand in hand for. Probably close to two years with public safety folks in, throughout South Dakota, um, to make sure that we were covering areas that they felt were critical to this network. This plan, AT&amp;T Towers, is now what AT&amp;T has required to build under our agreement with the state of South Dakota as part of Governor DuBard's offer in 2017. This website is a prime example of that input and that feedback. We do have a significant coverage gap in this area, and have an obligation to fill that under our agreement with the state. We're very sensitive to concerns in the local community. You know, this is a beautiful area, we have 360° sign coming down from St. Paul, and some kind of governor, this is the beginning of the year. You know, this is a beautiful area, and we know that some residents have expressed concerns about our status. We share those concerns and have worked hard to select the least intrusive site possible, while also trying to provide reliable connectivity. Ryan, then we'll talk about the process that we went through to get to this, so I don't want to spend any more time on that. I'd like to just address a few things, one is property value, that was one thing that was concerning to both of us the last year. Recent study shows that 76% of South Dakotans are wireless normal, and that's a really big number of people who are heading the port and relying solely on their wireless home. Yes, FCC also estimates that 70% of all 911 calls are made on wireless phone. So you can understand the importance of having a very robust network in every corner of the state as much as possible. Consumers want, and they expect connectivity. This is becoming especially true with what we're going through with the COVID pandemic, and COVID already started, and the pandemic starting out. Connectivity has become more important than ever for public safety, for consumers, for teachers, for students. Everybody's spending more and more time at their homes, except, and we need connectivity. There is no evidence of property value between this wireless service tower placement. On the contrary, reliable wireless connectivity is a top consideration for homebuyers and renters, and it can actually boost the home values up by 5%. Another benefit to this site is that MidCo will be providing the fiber to feed this tower. We understand how the internet access in this area is often difficult to get. They will be installing as part of this project, two miles of fiber optic cable to serve the proposed facility. They agree to let me state this to you all tonight. Well, once the construction and installation of the tower is complete. MidCo will have extended its fiber 2.3 miles from its current network, putting MidCo in a better position to extend service to more residents in this unserved area of Yankton County. So that is a, a good tremendous benefit to residents living in this area. I know that the issue of the road came up at the last hearing, and Ryan has been addressing that. But I do know that the vendor building this has agreed to make sure that it's to the standard it should be following construction. In addition, AT&amp;T will commit to providing a one-time payment to the HOA of $10,000 upon approval from the town for this site. The other issue I want to address is that of health effects. This proposed facility complies with the FCC applicable rules for radio frequency emissions, which is RF. Federal law forbids the county to regulate RF emissions standards. This means the county cannot deny the application over concerns about the effects of RF emissions, where a proposed facility will comply with the FCC's rules about RF emissions. This preemption of county action applies to direct concerns about health effects of RF emissions. And I know some complaints were made about, from opponents, about, you know, concerns about property values. But they're concerned about property values because of RF emissions not applicable to the county's jurisdiction. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening, and I would like to turn it over to Ryan to talk more about the process and the road situation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions after.
Good evening, Commissioner, Ryan Strapp with Public River Development on behalf of AT&amp;T Mobility. Again, we're here, we did have a continued continuation of this item from last month. Just a few things I want to go over with regards to our application and the comments that we received. Obviously, AT&amp;T did go over a few of these, begin the proposed tower, the site selection, and alternate sites, the right-of-way, which is 310th Street. And different types of mount or tower types, and then additional community enhancements that kind of come from this site being in this rural part of Yankton County. We did go through the application process last month, the county's consultant did a rundown of our application. Again, Rick Adams is the county's consultant. Based on his review and the supplemental that we had to the county, our proposed top meets all setbacks and county regulations. It is 195-foot monopole with a four-foot antenna, lightning rod, excuse me, at the top, making it a total of 199 feet. This particular site would be surrounded by six-foot wooden fence to surround the ground equipment at the base of the tower. So just want to show you a couple photos, make sure that you guys have this in your packet as well. But again, the proposed 199-foot tower, this is at approximately about half to three-quarters of a mile. This is a rendering that was put together, a photo stamp of the tower site. You can see that there's the antennas at the very top of this monopole, along with four possible co-locations or future carriers or users that could attach to the site itself.
Go ahead.
Just the very top one is what is guaranteed on it.
That's correct, Commissioner, the first site, the anchor tenant on this tower would be AT&amp;T, and they're at the very top of the, I think, like 100. 194 feet for the RAS center where their antennas would be attached. Per the county regulations, they require additional availability for other carriers or users to co-locate on the tower, and that's why we are proposing the site as you see in front of you in the seat. There was some questions this last month regarding where our proposed search ring or search area was located. From the yellow pin on the map shown, that is our proposed location with the red ring being our search area. Again, the closer we can be to our, our centroid or the center of that particular search ring, it provides a more coverage and a more effective tower to serve the residents of this area. So there was talk about what other sites do we look at? Again, just kind of quickly going over these sites, the proposed site is down at the middle bottom of the area photo showing green. And then there's a few other sites in yellow that were alternate sites that either were, we were unable to co-locate on, or the landlords were not, that we were working with, determined that they were no longer interested. There was a variety of other landowners or property owners that we had been in contact with, but again, it hasn't, there was, none of those were interested in this site with AT&amp;T at that time.
I've got a sheet right here that says the new build, the new structure, and it says, you need all the zoning regulations and you can no check.
Commissioner, I am not sure of the particular document that you're looking at, but based on our application and your company consultant's review, we need all regulations of your zoning.
Where does it come from? It's in your packet?
Maybe I would refer to staff, is there, is there a?
I may have to speak up, please. I have a copy where you're coming from. On your back of three. Down the chimney.
And maybe staff could address that afterwards. Again, I know that they've been in contact with your consultant, that they are review, and we in fact have met all regulations and setbacks with regards to your county regulations. But again, maybe staff could take a look at that to confirm that that is correct. So kind of continuing, our kind of two alternate sites or types of sites that the commission had reviewed or requested more information on were a flush mount type design or a monopole. And so if we would pursue, and I guess this was also brought up during the meeting this last month, if we were to pursue a flush mount design with this tower, typically AT&amp;T would need to consume a couple of the RAS on the towers. Doing so would mean less co-locations on the tower itself. I would probably expect two total carriers, maybe three of the five that we're proposing with the current monopole and the tower design as proposing your packet in the seat. Again, that is something if the commission would like to pursue, but noting that we have the ability to co-locate additional users on this tower at this time without having a flush mount. The other alternate option is to go with, per your request, was to provide some information or show you what a monopole could look like. Again, you know, in our review of the surrounding area, we felt that a monopole would actually be no out of place. Every, most people are very familiar with what monopoles or any telecommunications towers and equipment look like. Most of the time, they begin to kind of blend in as we see them every day as you drive down the road or in different communities.
You have dimensions on the flush mount, what that would look like. Right now, what you're, call it, your radius is going to look like in the, in height of that antenna versus what it would be on a flush mount.
Commissioner, if you're referring to the height, if we were to pursue a flush mount design, we would still stay at the 199-foot tower height.
The height of that, not above ground, but the physical dimension, that's going to be taller.
Yes, typically, the antennas are anywhere from six to eight feet in length. And because there's usually two antennas per sector or each side as you go around the monopole, you would probably only have one per, per sector. So you have first sector, one antenna each way, the same thing, you go down, one antenna each way, so it'd be typically it's a. Two RAS centers that would be occupied by.
Got you, so the physical antenna thing needs to rearrange. How they're mounted on those.
That's correct, and then it's the radios that are mounted in between or behind them as well, that'll take up the additional room or space on the flush mount design.
Sure, so if you're going to, the proposed design. And then I'm sure it's in one of these hundreds of pages, but you're going to protrude out from the, from the pole or out far. And then if you went flush mount, how far, you know, how much would you reduce that?
I'm just going to look up in the construction drawings, that should show the mount itself. Commissioner, it's not showing the exact dimension here of, of the design. It shows the, the brackets and mount that would be on the proposed monopole. Typically, those are anywhere at two to four-foot range that it would come off of the monopole. So when you get a flush mount, again, it's, it's pretty close that you're mounted right up to that. So you're going to be, you know, within a foot or two off, off of the tower. It includes how your radios are mounted, and that's the thickness of both the radio and the. So to continue with some of the alternate sites that we had reviewed, there is one existing tower that's within the search ring, and that was Northwestern Energy. And we discussed this site last month as well. Again, this particular application going back to 2014, we did, we were in contact with them, and they were not interested in 2014. And then with our current application, we did reach out to them, and again, not interested in having AT&amp;T co-locate on their tower. We did do some additional research on this particular site, it turns out that it's actually not adequate for the weight of the antennas that would be attached or co-located on this tower, even if the landlord would allow us to.
Do you have any documented studies for those?
As we have houses. I'm going to, I don't have the structural analysis that was conducted, I don't know. Something that would provide additional feedback to the commission. If needed. And then there was, again, like I said, there's a couple other sites that we had reviewed, and the landlords were no longer interested in sites five and six. And, and we just briefly discussed this, again, I'm going to go back to last month, that there was discussion on the access road on 310th Street. We've already, AT&amp;T has committed to that one-time payment of the $10,000. The highway department and our surveyors, again, confirming that it is a public right-of-way, that's to the north, which is 310th Street. And then also the contractor is committed to making any repairs from any damage that they would cause during the construction of the tower site.
310th Street is a section line, but is, in no way is it controlled by the county. That road is, what little road is there is there because of the people that live there. The people that live there over a period of time have built that road, they maintain that road, their time, their money is in that road, not the county. I think the people that live on that road deserve the right to have a say so on that.
Commissioner, all I can state is that it is, I'm not saying that it isn't maintained how you're telling me it's being maintained, I'm just saying, I'm confirming that it is public right-of-way. And then kind of my last slide here, of course, it's showing a coverage map, is, you know, the, the public benefit is from the FirstNet coverage that we discussed. Also, MidCo coming in and laying down fiber and future residential services that could follow. Again, with AT&amp;T, there is. Again, with AT&amp;T, there is internet available via your hotspot on your phone. Then also the one-time payment and investment into the public right of way in the road that was constructed. And just finish here, just kind of wanted to show, I know this had circulated for the commissioners this last, last month, showing the before coverage on the left and the after installation on the right. You could see that it significantly reduces the amount of unreliable coverage and increases the reliable coverage in this particular area of the company. So with that, we are open to take any questions.
Very little fun to find out that within your packet, the letter from Community Wireless Consultants on the second page, it does say this application meets all the objective requirements of Article 25, which is the article in the game to county zoning ordinance that deals with wireless facility construction and operation. That would be your packet.
Well, where this one comes from.
What are your packet?
I'm tired of hearing the packet. It looks like that, that, that piece of paper actually came in with the pre-application of the 400 foot tower. You look a few pages before that. So that's what it looks like it was pertaining to at that time. It was signed January 19 of last year or so. Or 2018, yeah.
Do you guys have any idea how much traffic will be to this tower after construction completed and started operational?
Commissioner, typical maintenance on this tower, if they were out there once a quarter, would probably be extent that they would need to visit that too much sites. So it's very infrequent.
Is that, are there trucks or is it just like a service?
Depending on what the scope of work would be, if they're changing out antennas or radios, of course, then they need, you know, a larger boom truck or climbing equipment that they would use to replace the antennas. Of course, there'll be larger trucks and cranes as they construct the tower itself. But typically if it was maintenance and them checking, it would be, you know, just a commercial truck that would be out there to do many regular maintenance. Commissioner, just to, I'm just gonna go back to this one particular photo here. Again, this is the elevation shot as within your construction drawings. And it is a monocle of a type design and there are no guide wires on this facility. That's right.
Remember there was discussed at the last meeting, the location within this property. I think it's, I'm gonna just call it our 400 feet south and 380 or something off the west. Was that originally for the 400? Do you remember why was that particular location chosen?
Commissioner, I guess going back on the drawings for the guided tower, I am not sure that it was adjusted much in that particular location. Off the top of my head here, I'm trying to remember what the particular setback would be for a tower. I guess we were proposing at the 400 and about 420 feet from the north. And 410 feet from the west. And more than that from both the south and the east property lines.
Yeah. I guess what I'm curious is that is that the highest point on that property? You know, is that the select, why that was selected or what? Even at 400 foot, what would that, why would, why would that corner have been chosen versus?
Commissioner, is there an alternate location that you are trying to, would like to propose or want to? For now, we're just to see if we could work it in in a different location. We could review that because this is on that landlord's property. Again, to look at how we look at it is making sure that we're meeting the setbacks or the county regulations. And the shorter that we can run our facility and road. You know, it's, sometimes it's unnecessary if, well, I want it to be another 100 feet to the south. It just, there's additional costs involved. But if that is a better placement for it, it's something that we can consider and bring back to our client.
And I don't have a specific spot. That's, I was just curious if it was if, if there was a particular reason for that or if that was an option to. Why is that? Worked better or not, so. Did you look for other places to put this tower?
Commissioners, that is, I guess, I'll go back to the map that we had shown here again. Was our, our search ring that we were looking in to be able to service this area. And then the alternate sites shown up on the map here are ones that would be invested more time in to finding a property owner that would pursue or continue to pursue a tower location with us. And for our application, we came out to the property just sold at 310.
Yeah, but I just don't understand why you want to stick that right in the middle of the residential area. There's a lot of homes, lots of people that are right there, spread around there. Should be pretty obvious to me that no one wants it there. So why are you so adamant about putting it there? It's, I mean, it's, it's unfortunate to some people. It's causing some people not being able to sell some property. Can't you find someplace else?
Commissioner, I think we looked at 18. Practically 18 different locations. We have a search ring that was identified, the circle that you saw. And this, again, I know that we've been trying to do something in this area for a long time because we've had a significant gap in this area for a long time. But when we worked with the governor's office and we worked with public safety, this was an area that they also identified as.
We've been working with the governor's office while you lost a few, bunch of people that have lived there.
Well, but we worked with public safety, Commissioner, and, and they identified this as an area that needed to have strong coverage.
And it doesn't because these people don't want it.
Well, I, you know, I would just say that, that it's really more connectivity in an area is, and I don't think it's a bad thing. I'm sorry they don't feel that way.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, all right. Any other questions for them before I ask for public comment? Thank you for your time. All right. If you would like to speak on this particular agenda item, you may come forward and state your name.
This is just a simple, I actually. I want to give you four of your time.
Yeah, we should go attend. There's part two. One given.
I'm in town, Jerry, I'm announced as a reporter.
Yes, we're going to limit each person to three minutes to give everybody a chance to speak. You can tell me, all right. So. Say your name.
My name is Andrew Mybom and I live at 43348 310th Street. And interesting enough, in the packet that I looked at, exhibit one in the packet was my address as the site tower's address. I'm not a member of this tower and do not think that my address should have been listed as the site address of this project. I would like to point out information in my packet that I have provided to the zoning committee that they're falsifying information. In exhibit eight, identified as the zoning application, the present zoning classification was listed as agricultural. Which if you look at exhibit five C in their packet, you can see clearly that the property is highlighted in yellow, which doesn't make low density residential. And I also provided copies from the beacon that show the other properties that they placed in the two mile area map. Stating these were also agricultural. These areas are also highlighted in yellow, also showing that they are also known as low density residential. So as per section 2507, number one of Article 25, they did not locate sites in accordance with the appropriate priorities first. They listed the location as priority E, which is agricultural. A conditional use permit allows a property owner to utilize their property in a way not allowed under the current zoning ordinances. Unlike a conditional use permit, which allows an owner to use the property in a specific way. Other certain conditions, rezoning actually legally changes the zone of the property. I also went to the zoning office, paid a dollar for a copy to have them tell me that the site is, location is zoned as residential. Which is a priority F in section 2507, number one of Article 25. Number three in section of 2507 of Article 25 states, an applicant may not bypass site's priority by stating that this site proposed is the only site leased or selected. Number five of section 2507 of Article 25 states, if appropriate, based on selecting a site of lower priority, a detailed written explanation as to why sites of higher priority were not selected shall be included with the application. And I don't see any of their exhibits, any of their exhibits, the reason they chose to use residential zone property before trying to find locations in agricultural zones first. All right, that's kind of all I have. And my last page of that also shows a beacon map where I tried to measure out the two mile radius. And you can see, and if you pull up their map, their ring, you can see north of 50 is zoned agricultural and.
Next person. Is there someone else that would like to speak?
My name is Ron McKee. My life on our possible fires and like to build a house, a lot that you can, I'm doing free. You have something in the project related to that. We're against obviously this tower for a number of reasons. One is of course the, you know, luck at it every day and that was, you all know that. We also think the property value really will come down. Maybe the coverage will be better. But I really think that somebody's trying to buy a place and likely our value of our property really will be less. But one of the big reasons is health. You know, we, I'm a cancer survivor. And I look at those radio waves, yeah. They're very, very dangerous. You know, they're coming out 24 hours a day from that tower. You know, you have some information in your pack that's related to your, to health in those radio waves. You know, the, Europe does a great job. They do a lot of scientific battle gathering and they don't develop these towers and work for residential, residential areas. They just don't put them there. In the United States, we have relevant some, we have opposing viewpoints on the radio frequencies. But I have to tell you that the Food and Drug Administration in 2018, their national toxicology program have a three-day meeting. And at the end of that meeting, they said the radio wave is more compelling and indicates greater risk and initially acknowledged. You know, they felt the data were encouraged, were encouraged from the FCC would change the debate on some of the technologies that would be coming out. And of course, the FCC kind of sat on it and didn't do all of that. Other county activists really said, hey, you know, this really, this scientific panel conclusion would really pressure, pressure federal agencies to issue safety warnings and title safety standards for electronic devices. You know, that hasn't come out. But they've got a shit lead to a reduction in exposure limits. You know, there's a lot of information out there. The World Health Organization has an international agency for research on cancer. They classified RF radiation as possibly carcinogenic in humans, causing brain tumors in humans. And if you look at what's happened to the LA County Fire Department, they have weak communication powers on those stations. What happened was they had new firemen having issues. And so they did studies, scientific studies and found these firemen will have a brain anomalies and neurological deficits based on those radio towers. They passed the Senate bill and said, no more. I think that we're really at a point where, you know, some of this, we, we're saying we can't deny. But it makes me think in terms of asbestos and tobacco. You know, in this day and our day, both of those are readily accepted, pushed by the government. And you know what happened? Here we are with these RF waves. So really think about that because a lot of people are gonna get list based on your decisions. But thank you very much.
Okay, I have a question. Can I, how far away would you be from the tower?
We're, well, when I look at it, we're about five or 600 feet away. And I don't know where it's gonna end up on that. It looks like it shifted a little, so it may change a little, maybe a little less, I don't know. Our daughter, lot 12, both of us, we're in the process, she'd be at us in mind. We have a closing party. We're supposed to close on August 31st, table. And based on this, yeah. Lot 12 is about 400 feet away. It's right at the fence and she has two little daughters.
Okay, so that's five to 600 feet away from the property line or from your home?
No, from her. I think the whole, the property line is fairly close. It's out of the fence. They're a little short, stretch it all the way out to the fence and then the tower plus.
Okay, next person? If there's another person that would like to speak?
My name is Chad Dumber. And first of all, back to, was not meeting the site of zoning regulation, it's fifth goal. The explanation was on the following two pages. It is for the 199th monocle, it's not for the 400. We are centered in the process of buying lot 16. And I'm gonna hand out some handouts quickly. I'm gonna talk about taxation. Joe shares in here from Sunday fair. Where I got my information. With the surrounding. Okay, lot 16, my son wants to build a house. I parked my pickup right at the site for the house. GPS took me directly to the tower site, 400 feet. That would be the closest our house would be. Lot number 15 is gonna be very close to that lot 16 and tip of the house in the corner. So we're both right in the same area. I'm going to go now to the taxation. I took ten surrounding parcels of the proposed tower site. The last five years, ten people, a hundred thousand five hundred thirty nine dollars was received in taxes. Total eighty three acres. This is all coming from Beacon, Beacon County. Three ninety eight wild pile off our road, the proposed site. According to Beacon, it was still being taxed as agricultural. Forty eight point eight nine acres. That's collected was thirty three hundred fourteen ninety two. Sundance Ridge. Lots eight, nine, ten, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen are all proposed building lots. All hundred fifty seven dollars, twenty four, total forty five seventy two for ninety nine acres total. I guess my feeling as a. County resident. They're jeopardizing the total income that we can receive as a county for taxation on future building sites. I do have a question. What is the county receiving from this tower company, the compensation? Is there any money given to the county? Can anyone answer me that?
Well, it's a five thousand dollar application fees, that's correct theory, correct.
Do I get any money tied? County, now, releasing me from the property?
Application fees.
You saw your doctor put up his.
We would get the tax. The asset tax, and I couldn't tell you that.
Yeah, I'll tell you what's happening. Copy in there. The landowner. Is leasing the ground to the. Leasing to the tower. Says right in the form. That the landlord will pay the taxes. So they're going to just rent it from him. I don't know what they're giving him. Per year because. And here in his agreement. Across out the dollar that he's going to receive from the house. So basically, what I'm saying is. You want to jeopardize county tax income. These properties are not going to sell. One of them is lot sixteen. That's the one my son is buying, was buying. He may not be. God's going to take a big hit on that. Let's see, Sundance. Let's think about that. All those building lots, eight, nine, ten. Right now, the county is receiving a couple hundred fifty seven dollars. That's probably going to be. Maybe six, five homes. It could be as much as some of these people have been paying over five years, up to twelve thousand. And we're paying thirty three hundred nine dollars for our taxes. You can just read through it. Yes, that's going to be my point. I think we're selling out to someone. And don't tell me you can't find another spot to work for. It does not have to be in a residential. There's a reason why this farmer. Person's going to rent this ground off. There isn't a right to say you don't get a good job. Do you? My dear. That's all I have to say.
Hey, would someone else like to speak?
I'm Todd Huber. And my wife and I own a property four hundred fifty feet directly west of the proposed tower location. On this property, we've invested a great amount of time, money, and resources to establish a development called Sundance Ridge. At great financial risk, we purchased the land, constructed the road in culverts, installed fee by water. Lines and installed fee by electric lines. There are currently, there are currently fourteen property owners in Sundance Ridge, and many have built beautiful houses. These premium lots, most with lake views, range in price from sixty five thousand to over a hundred thousand per lot. And all the homes are valued at well over four hundred thousand. To date, Sundance Ridge has added approximately four million dollars to Yankton County property tax valuations. That's attachment number one. Approved. That's actually came out of Beacon, about two weeks ago, valuations. Property tax valuation for Sundance Ridge can increase. As it has another two hundred sixty acres of ground. But not with a tower built next to it. And that's the map that I should, that I showed there. In that map, the proposed tower site is in blue, and Sundance Ridge is in orange. We currently have one lot that was previously talked about, Sundance Lot fifteen, that is in contract to sell, but we received a written addendum. Indicating withdrawal at the top of the offer, as the tower is approved. And that's attachments two and three. That's been two, repaid upon the addendum as one each. We also have another lot, sundance number sixteen, that is in contract to sell, we have verbal withdrawal of offer if that is approved. That's attachment number four. This past week, we received, though, we have another lot, sundance seventeen, and we have a very earnest buyer. But he is not going to submit an offer if the tower is approved. This is where I solidly notice that this tower will not only keep out, it will create property in the area, but will also make property unsold. Like any other corporation, we have loans and expenses. The loss of one, two, or three lots can really bring up a small corporation like us. Approving this tower will certainly affect my wife, not personally, as it will definitely push out our retirement plans. Approving this tower will certainly discourage any future developments in the area. And kind of touching on another area is this the road issue. I personally talked to Mike Slachek this morning, he's Yankton County Highway Superintendent. He said there are many issues at three ten street, between four thirty four, Cedar Hills Road. One of the biggest issues is that three ten street is in the wrong location. Some areas, fences are located in the middle of where the road section behind should be. Do you want me to continue on this road issue?
I'll let everybody speak, and then if you want to.
Okay, because I think the road issue is very important. And so I guess at the end I'll talk about that also. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, hi, my name is Phil Myvam, and I live at four three three four eight three ten street, and I oppose the tower. My concern is on facts that there will be signs placed at access points. Of the tower site that states beyond this point, you are entering a controlled area where RF emissions may exceed. The FCC general population. Exposed limits. Who? Wants to buy or build a house with signs across the road stating this. How does this not impact the residents living in their homes? The fact that this letter was sent to a hundred and seven property owners in the half mile, that does show that there is concerns for the impact of this neighborhood. And community. I am also showing you a photo of the tower viewing from my home. Since it wasn't included in the visual impact section, even though we were the closest house to it. Section twenty five oh three, number six of article twenty five says. In granting a conditional use permit, the county. Has found that the facility shall be the most appropriate site as regarding being the least visual intrusive among those available in the county. Well, if you look at that. Paper, my house, how can that not be visually intrusive? How is the placement of this tower? Affects the residents in the area. Maybe locating the tower in the center of the property would have less visual impacts surrounding the neighbors. But truthfully, there is a better location listed on their ring map that has less visual impact on residents and less residents in the area.
So what direction are you proposing they would be moving?
Just agricultural, they're supposed to follow the soup. They list, they buy agricultural in their box of what my wife gave you, they have a moderate residential. And somebody put, used a pen, and it's put lower residential. And that kind of shows that it's incomplete.
Exhibit five C. Was that behind? Exhibit five C. I'm going to tell you, took me ten minutes to find what I looked for.
And how far are you away from the tower?
I believe seven hundred eighty four. There are not even a pulse to some people, if you see that view of that. Outer window. You also got to remember that the sign is going to be. You know, that fence goes around, and that's a hundred foot fence, so that's another at least fifty foot closer to the goal.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Next person?
I got one more question. How would you self-service out there? Is it a problem?
No, Verizon.
No, I have a Verizon.
Is that something that I, I've heard a lot of different things talked about, that I believe this is one of the.
And I've seen. And that when the COVID came on, we had a hotspot, and that's where she had to stay home and work from there for a while. We started school again.
Because we've had different residents further to the north of my unit because it can't get services at that.
But you got to remember, if you're too close to the tower, it will not help you. Most of the residents around there, it won't help.
Like this is providing service more south.
It's in their paper farther south. That has nothing to do with us up there.
Basically, it's the length of the marina.
Yes. Okay, all right, next person.
My name is Lisa Huber. My husband Todd and I live in Sundance Ridge Development and are developers of the Sundance Ridge. Property. This is adjacent to the west and also wraps around the south side of the proposed towers. We have developed lots for sale in this area and are here to voice our objections to building this tower. I also spoke at last month's meeting and would like to have you relook at the information that I submitted on that time. I'm not going to repeat my information because I only have three minutes. We are the landlords sharing a common fence line with the property in discussion for the communication tower. Most of the lots in the Sundance Ridge area are within view of this proposed site of the tower. The lot that shares the common fence line with this proposed site is beautiful. It has a three hundred and sixty degree view, including a lake view. This lot and one other lot are currently in contract to sell, and I know that you've heard that before from my husband. Both are pending the outcome of this meeting, one with a written statement for withdrawal and the other with a verbal statement for withdrawal. The independent consultant that Yankton had hired, Rick Adams, had indicated at the last meeting that the effect on property values would be a valid reason for not choosing this site for the tower. This withdrawal is included in your tonight's packet as written proof that it will bring down our property values. The AT&amp;T consultant had said that my property value would go up by five percent. But if I lose these three contracts, it's down one hundred percent. And there's no denying that. In the county's own article eighteen oh five, number five, you indicate that planning commission has specific rules governing individual conditional uses. Letter H states that general compatibility with the adjacent properties and other properties in the district. And that granting the conditional use will not adversely affect public interest. Well, I'm here to say that certainly general compatibility of a tower with lake view lots. Are not compatible neighbors. And the other point is that. Granting this conditional use would certainly adversely affect my public interest and the rest of Sundance Ridge public interest. The report from AT&amp;T included in the packet indicated that the closest home to the proposed tower is greater than seven hundred feet, which is my bums. All of the safety reports are based on that number. The property that we have for sale is four hundred and ten feet from the tower. And there is a proposed building site that is fifteen feet from the common fence line, which is consistent with a lateral or rear lot view on our covenants. That would put this home four hundred and twenty five feet from that tower. The lots that are in contracts. Thank you. For your consideration. I do have one other point that I would like to make, and I had talked with someone from AT&amp;T. If you would like to hear that information later, I would love to say.
Thanks, anyone else?
Hello, my name is Ken Burge. I'm an attorney from Menlo. And the Hubers had asked me to. To review on behalf of Sundance Ridge LLC, the development corporation they formed for the last look at the application. So I did that, and the first thing that I'd like to point out. Is section eighteen oh five indicates the commission shall not review a conditional use request. And until all documents required for said use have been satisfactorily completed. Well, first of all, the application isn't complete. That was identified, it lists the zoning use as A, and it's zoned R one. Low density rural residential. The section twenty five oh seven lists priorities for the location of towers. Since A is listed as a higher priority, those areas are to be explored first. There's nothing in the application that indicates they examine any of those agricultural areas. There was four properties identified by them. I believe all four of those properties were classified as, as R one. I actually spoke with a couple of those people. One, Ned did indicated that what AT&amp;T was offering to pay wasn't enough, and he denied the application. They never came back with another proposal. I spoke with Cronheisel. One of the other properties, he indicated that AT&amp;T never offered him anything to place a tower there. And incidentally, Cronheisel's property is directly across from the Northwestern Energy Tower. That tower actually has access to Highway fifty. And is, you know, about two miles away. The other thing that's interesting about this application. And some of the. Materials that were provided, the consultant for the county indicates that there was an original application. And it was for a site that was one point five miles north of the current site. And then due to difficulties with the consultant, AT&amp;T withdrew that request. And I believe they had said that request was two thousand fourteen. Mention was made of that. There was nothing in this after time.
Excuse me?
We'll let everybody speak if anyone wants to come up. Okay, is there anyone else who wants to talk?
If that please, or if I would like to yield my time to the gentleman who was just speaking.
Um, you can't. Everybody else is done talking, if you come back, but we can't like have somebody, you know, the ten people. But we can't like have somebody, you know, the ten people would say, I'm gonna give my time to them and then one person talks. We want everybody interested in the rest of what you have to say.
Um, I will add that we have Verizon and it's perfect. I mean, I've not had any problems with Verizon. We live at two eighty, but I'm sorry, I'm in a city. Uh, we live at two eighty-six Cedar Hills Road. Um, I am hmm, not happy that this is um, an idea that um, which this is a, as I said before, it is a low residential area and um, it's not corporate, it's not.
So you live in Sundance Ridge then?
Cedar Hills Road.
Cedar Hills.
So our house would, we would see that tower, right? We are neighbors to make off, so we're the next plot over. Um, and as far as internet access, I know that AT&amp;T were suggesting that, you know, they would provide better internet access. We have internet access and it works perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
My name is John St. Martin, the three-two-one Cedar Hills Road. Probably the second closest existing house in this proposed tower. I have nine point eight acres. If the original plan is three, separate acreage is front acreage, it's about four acres. I use it as a horse pasture. Future plan is to potentially sell it or build a house. It would help my retirement if I could sell that lot or spend more on a customer. I've never seen in over years I've been in residential construction. Real estate property, advertising, beautiful tower, never in my heart, sorry. So quickly I'm gonna go through this. My, that's one concern, cash out of my pocket. I won't see that for years to come. How can I prove it? I talked to appraisers, don't have any comparables, so I can't give you a letter and say, here's the proof in my letter that I put in your packet. There is a, an article, it's a generic, it's a twenty percent property loss. Who can prove it? You have to be a victim or tell you proof. So one big thing is that three hundred and ten road security concerns, it says truly a concern, it's too narrow. It's too close to existing houses. Our guys will follow the snow kindly, push the snow off, it blows in. Kids get up in the morning, they go off to school, they walk down the road. It's probably between thirty and forty feet from somebody's house, the road is off. The easement line went quite a bit to the north in some places where all the houses are. We get a construction crews, we get semi trucks are gonna come in now and cranes. Guys linked to the job, I see it as a huge concern. Some kid walking home in the evening, after school it's dark and some guys barreling out there. The people that live around there understand there's kids and pets, old people out walking and stuff. So they can get run over quite easily. Also, as you come opposing traffic, we know how it is. Pull over, you see somebody coming dip over this side, running past trucks with rearview mirrors. They came on going most times. So if there's a fire truck and ambulance going opposite ways in the middle of the night, that road's only like, I don't know, it's even twenty feet wide. Pouring drain, yes, it's just totally improper. It's a two, two lane track. We've tried to make it a little better. Um, there's no drainage on a muddy day, a ten thousand dollars they're offering to fix a road, probably wouldn't fix it. I know it won't build much because I built some of these roads. I'll walk and speak to that. If you guys jam this through, make it happen on this property, I think it should go to the mill of that property. Some of the decreeers are equally impacted because it will impact everybody around there.
Alright, next person.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for letting me have a voice. My name is Kami Dugaski. I live at four-three-three-nine-four-three-hundred-and-ten street. I'm the first house on three hundred and ten street. The atrocious road that you've heard many of my neighbors discuss today. As Mr. Huber was saying, there are many, many, many problems with this road. I've lived there for ten years. Um, they've never been addressed. We brought the issue up many times. I'm definitely not in favor of the tower going into a residential. As you've seen tonight, all of these amazing people are asking you to also hear their voice and hear their concerns and make impact that this is going to have on our area. Like it, it's a burden and I'm grateful that you uh, serve on this commission. But I definitely, definitely want you to listen to the concerns. We've, we've talked about um, health concerns, financial concerns, safety concerns. And we've heard the representatives from AT&amp;T discuss like, we're gonna bring some better internet. I don't think that children, again, as they're walking their buns to school with snow up to their panty because unfortunately, our road is thirty-three feet in the wrong area. They don't care as they're not safely making their destinations if we're gonna have better internet. Before we started to discuss the tower, we discussed a hobby farm. The representatives from AT&amp;T, I heard them state that more residential could possibly pop up, but it's definitely a given. It's an amazing area. If you have not gotten in your cars and actually drove out to the area, it is fantastic. The Sundance Ridge is phenomenal. The road is definitely a situation that's not gonna go away. We've discussed like the hobby farm, building more houses, this is definitely something that has to be addressed, but I definitely feel a tower is not long to the rest of the town. There's that in a better place. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next person. Would someone else like to speak?
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Adam Shalowski. I live at three-one-zero-three-eight Sundance Ridge. Uh, my lot is neighbors to several folks who heard tonight. Uh, neighbors to lot fifteen, sixteen, as well as twelve. I don't need to mention any more proof about the problems that this tower will raise for us. The one thing I want to mention specifically and get you guys to think about is as homeowners, um, how would you feel if, if your home was obstructed by a two hundred foot tower right out of your front door? That's what it is for my home. I built on a five acre lot. My front door works right out in the base of that tower. And I built that lot, or I built that home um, to retire on, to build my family on and um, I can't express to you the level of frustration and opposition I have to this. And I hope that your vote will support every single person in this room that you've heard opposition from. There hasn't been one person that made a difference. I appreciate your time. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you. Okay, next person. If you come up, we also step up.
I'm Todd Huber again and uh, getting back to the road issue of three-ten street. Uh, this morning I talked to Mike Slachek. He's the Yankton County Highway Superintendent. He said there are many issues with three-ten between four-thirty-four Avenue and Cedar Hills Road. One of the biggest issues is that three-ten street isn't located in the location. Um, in some areas fences are located in the middle of the road section should be located. Also, the county does not maintain the road. I have no plans, but the county is maintaining the road. Um, three-ten is a, three-ten street adjacent to the proposed tower location is dirt trail with grass between the roofs. Um, currently local property owners provide and or pay for maintenance on the road, including grading culverts, gravel, snow, whatever, like that. The existing culverts that are in the road have no way sustain uh, handle the large equipment that would be used to put this tower up. Mike Slachek was saying that in order for three-ten to be, to be constructed right, would be surveyed and all the existing infrastructure would need to be relocated. The road would then need a total regrade, including top rooftop construction, ditches, culverts, gravel, ongoing maintenance. I know that AT&amp;T is offering ten thousand, but my experience from putting roads in, it's gonna take about a hundred thousand to finish this road up. So that ten thousand will do nothing. Another issue would be the location of utilities for this tower. On this part, the, the tower will require tie rod finds, power required for the tower will need to be located deep enough in the area that will not interfere, interfere with future road construction. Mike said that in some areas up to five feet dirt will need to be moved in order to build the type of ditches. And the location of that would be unknown since three-ten street is located, was not located at the correct location.
Where's that road going straight?
No. It's kind of zigzags and uh, and it's kind of like bump, bounces from side to side. And like I said, some of the section line fences are right down, or the, some fences are, are down in the middle of the road where the road should be. So it would take.
This other road is on somebody else's property.
Yes.
Okay. So.
Any more questions on three-ten?
I, I have a question on um.
Who developed all this area out there? I can't believe that. I didn't have some kind of, some kind of road.
I'd say my product, my product started that up there. Prior to that, it was just kind of a little dirt path that was comprised of the rocky patch. My product started that uh, that development. Uh, he went to the county then and told you on the road and they said no. And so as, as people moved out there, uh, they did the road. Uh, when I moved out there, there was times I couldn't even drive home. I had to leave my car set up by itself and walk home. And then over a period of time, that people that live there kind of scraped the road, had gravel put on there. My mom himself, from my driveway up past his, which is probably a little bit better than an eighth of a mile, he put eighteen to twenty loads of gravel on that road himself. And that's how these roads got, got hooked. There you go, see, this, no doubt from, from the county.
This red line is four-thirty-four Avenue. And then this.
Where's the road?
Three-thirds of the road right there.
Well, that's three-ten.
That's three-ten. And you can see where it kind of bows, that kind of bows over there to the north side of, up to that line. You go further west and then it's up.
This is the road we're talking about.
What happened with that south piece was, hey, how it started going on the north. Right, the road went to the north side of the fence. The fence should be the center of the, of the right way.
Right.
And then as it goes down and it was vice versa, there was development on the, on the south and the north half remained. So that fence stayed and the road zigzagged down.
So it's like, what's your third of the straight in that, what, are we at the straight in that road we're using?
They were. When you look at three, you're standing on the side of four-thirty-four. Then if you get on that, on three-ten on the east side and go west, it's lost quite a bit.
From the section line to my property, from the section line to the edge of the road I just measured it off, it's thirty-eight feet. From that, from the edge of the road to the my property, which should be just.
So if AT&amp;T were trying to say they're gonna use it the way it is, they'd have to locate their power and their fiber optic someplace that, I don't know where they would put it. Because if they're gonna put it, if they put it through private property, they're gonna get it, they're gonna get it through private property. And if they put it right down in the middle of the road, then if there is any future construction, um, you know, how would they do that then? Future construction on top of the fiber optic or the power lines or whatever they're doing there. So utilities is certainly an issue, road is certainly an issue.
Thank you.
Uh, where's the power feeding most of this? Or where do you, where does that mix that comes from the south?
Our power comes from the south, comes up from here. The water comes down from the river.
Thank you. Okay, somebody else wanna come? Come on up, Mr. Huber.
Just to maybe follow up where I left off. Uh, another one of the issues that I found was in uh, section eighteen oh five, paragraph five. It says before a conditional use is decided, planning commission shall make rhythm finding, may says as the ingress and egress from the property. I don't think that's been addressed literally by AT&amp;T. First of all, you just talked about the utilities and the road. Uh, they can offer ten thousand. They had mentioned an HOA. I would assume that's homeowners association. I don't believe there's a homeowners association set up for that area. So hey, they can't just say we're gonna give you ten thousand bucks to be happy and go away. They need to have an agreement with these people. So their application is incomplete as to that aspect. The uh, where I left off before, I was talking about the uh, application that they had made years ago that they withdrew. And that indicated there was a tower a mile and a half north of the present location that would be adequate. And now that wasn't even addressed in there, in their uh, application at all. The uh, if it was adequate in two thousand fourteen or however many years ago, why was it not adequate now? That uh, mile and a half north probably puts it on the north side of Highway fifty and that's egg land up there. Egg land has a higher priority than residential land. So that's something that this zoning board should be aware of before it makes a decision. Uh, so again, the application is incomplete. The other thing that I noticed, uh, they have to establish that they, they can't uh, they have to do a meaningful uh, attempt to co-locate a tower. And that, that documentation has to be provided with the application. There's, there's no documentation provided at all. The uh, documentation that I saw in the application indicated that, that they attempted when they made the first application. So four or five years prior to this application, they talked to Northwestern Energy. Apparently negotiations brought down at that point. I'm not sure why. But it's very possible that maybe Northwestern is not willing to consider that. And uh, tonight was the first time I heard that they had recently been contacted. The packet that I saw indicated that they didn't even pursue that. The uh, the other thing that I, that I noticed was there's a requirement for a balloon test. The other thing that I noticed was there's a requirement for a balloon test. And the requirement is set forth in 2506, Paragraph 11G. It indicates a three-foot balloon has to be parched for four consecutive hours. Exhibit five in the application indicates that a balloon was not used. It was my understanding a drone of some type was used. That it was, it was up in the air approximately an hour at 10 o'clock on the designated date. And then because of weather, they brought it down. And then around 2:00, they put it up for another half hour. Well, first of all, the drone doesn't meet the balloon requirement. Secondly, it's to be four continuous hours. There was no four continuous hours. So I think for that reason alone, you need to reject the application because that balloon test was not fit. In speaking with the Hubers, they weren't aware of that balloon test. They apparently missed the legal notice that would be published in the newspaper. So had it been up for four hours, maybe they would have noticed the balloon and asked certain questions as to why it was there. But in any event, they did not meet the requirements. So I think they haven't met all the requirements that are needed where there's four to accept their application. But I don't know, the board has a whole lot of alternatives, but to reject their application. So I didn't want to take that point in my designated time. I thought of some important things that I observed in looking through that packet and why to make sure that the board is aware. Thank you.
Okay, last call for anybody that would like to speak.
Just one more. So John Lee Carter, I was witness of their balloon test. And it was a very windy day. And see about where my vehicles pull up. They're all adults. I see drones go up. We're deep in around, we're all parked in the county road. I watched them. My wife and I had some comments about where they were filming or whatever. And they did leave for a while and they came back after lunch. It was just a short period of time, it was a very windy day. I had no reason to go question what they were doing. I think it was after all this COVID scare. I figured the children were out playing with their toys on the county road. They didn't leave it in cans or bottles, so I really didn't have a picture. I saw them, but drones were not up very long. They went up, sat down, and were pretty much situated over the county road.
Thank you.
I just have one question. My marriage is faulty. I live right in Pine Woods. If 310 is not adequate for them to be taking these big chunks down, what's going to happen? Are they going to come down Cedar Hill Road? And we put a lot of money into getting that road rebuilt and redesigned. Everything's perfect on that road right now. I want to know if that equipment is coming down our road? If you can't do 310?
You also private road person?
Yes. We put in all money. I've been there for almost 22 years.
We've got a road dispute.
You've got a road dispute. You guys separated off those good plan.
But it was to the point that we put a lot of money into this place to rebuild, reset up to where it's supposed to be before it was brought to this deep. And then I want to know what's going to happen if you can't go down 310? Are you going to come down Cedar Hill Road and destroy that road? Because all the money we put into it and built it? That's most important. I don't want to look at it either. I'm not even a quarter mile. I do have AT&amp;T. And we don't have issues. We still have our, I have my internet through the hotspot, hot box, whatever it is. All this I have myself. I don't have any issues. We always like to have better. But right now, if it's going to destroy for my neighbors, I'm not going to put in for that, vote for that. I'm against it totally. Thank you. And anybody else?
Go ahead.
Jim Thorson, and I live in Housing Development Property Owners Association to the south of the proposed tower. The south 200 feet, as I mentioned last month, the south 200 feet of that property in which the tower is located is actually included in our homeowners association as far as covenant is concerned. It was a combined deal that you probably run into before. But what I want to say though is that to eliminate this idea that you can move that tower on that property, because you start moving it south, so it gets away here a little bit. It'll still be very visible by the people you had talked already. But you move it south, you're moving it right into two of our homeowners. I mean, they'll be right in their front yards. And and much more visible. We're further down the road on the bluff there. But I just, those people aren't here. I just wanted to put that in for them. To move that, to move that tower on that property, there is no room to move it. You're going to move it into Hamleys. You're going to move it into two of our homeowners. You're going to move it into Sundance Ridge. You're going to, you know, there's no place to put it. It's just not a compatible situation, I don't think. So thank you.
Hi, anyone else want to speak?
My name is Kevin Gunther. I spoke earlier. Back when we were talking a little bit earlier about the Justin Kidding Farms spoke about future development, someone to buy that piece of property, want to put another home back in there. What about this 48 acres that the Creekers own right now? They're not going to own it forever. Are they going to sell it to someone that will want to put our housing development? If they go in there, I'm going right back to our taxation. How many people are going to want to build a home next to a tower? You're going to deprive the county of its tax. But a lot of this there, the taxes are roughly, oh, 2019, how much property? $1,259. But here, I for Sundance, 31038, Jelalski, he paid 46,000 annual loans. Maybe if he's getting the balance, the income to the county is going to be increased tremendously. Not all the taxes go to the county or no one goes to the school. Maybe we get enough houses out in the county to afford the things to create. Finally.
All right, anyone else? Okay, public comment is now closed. Any discussion for the board?
We have Adrian. Do you have a question?
Yeah, we should offer them our vote. So we can address some of the concerns that we're wanting.
Do you want us to address some of the concerns or do you want to ask a question? Well, we can address a couple things. What do you want to go first, go even? Let me do a couple things. Okay, so I know a couple folks mentioned that their Verizon service works fine. So I want to address that first of all. Two things on that. Verizon is not the partner for first end. AT&amp;T is the partner for first end. So again, we have that obligation to stay in South Dakota and to build the site because that's in the state plan. And that was identified by Public Safety. And Public Safety wants this site because there aren't going to be incidents around that area, it's a renovation area. And it's going to be an area that Public Safety wants to be able to communicate. So I just want to state that. Secondly, we have an identified coverage gap. So that means that we have the right to try to address that gap in the best way we can, and feel like this is the best way we can. Under the Telecommunications Act, we have the right to try to address that coverage gap. So just stating that. Back to, a couple folks mentioned health effects. And I'm just going to read part of something from the senior packet from our attorney. The proposed facility will operate within applicable FCC limits. Our application included RF emissions compliance report prepared by State Site Safe, which concluded that the proposed facility will comply with FCC regulations for human exposure to RF emissions. Additionally, the FCC categorically excludes antennas installed above 10 meters high, which is 32.8 feet high from environmental assessment because of prospect of excess radio frequency exposure from them is so remote. The antennas at the proposed facility will be about six times taller than that. So there's even less basis for concern. Given the compliance with the FCC standards, the proposed facility cannot be rejected based on concerns about radio frequency emissions. And then the other thing, I think just to point out is, it was stated that the application is not complete. However, in your packet from, with, from the Community Wireless Consultant, on page two, this application meets all the objective requirements of Article 25, which is the article in Yankton County zoning ordinance that deals with wireless facility construction and operation. So this has been identified. And I understand that Yankton County's ordinance for wireless is quite extensive compared to other locations. And I know we have spent a lot, a lot of time and a lot, a lot of money on this. And we have checked out all the boxes. That is my understanding. It sounds like this is what your consultant is seeing as well.
Commissioners, I guess just to, I just to address a few things here that I have noted. Again, regarding that the application is incomplete. And your, the county and your consultant states that in fact, they went through all the regulations and stated that it is complete. I am aware that with regards to the zoning of the site, in your packet, it also outlines the zoning district and shows that it is a low-density residential. My understanding within the application, again, that's the basis of our conditional use permit, that the existing use on that property is an ag use. There's, the homes built on that property or what have you. It's, it's used at this point as an agricultural land. With regards to the right of way, I know that, you know, there's concern with vehicles that would be coming and going, which again, after construction is very infrequent. And most of the time there, unless they were to remove the tower, a lot of that large equipment would not come back. So I don't see the differences if you are building homes and you have a crane come in, put up raptors or whatever you might have. There's still that construction, the equipment that would come and go. For new home construction, a pole line that went in or what have you. Or large farm equipment that may or may not go across the site if they were doing any farming or agricultural practices. We would be utilizing that right of way in the right of way, not on public property, in the right of way to locate and place our power and utilities. Again, there would be no need to have those utilities on private property because there is an active right of way and out front of this tower site. Based on my review and our survey's review of the parcel, that the road is within the right of way in that particular section. Unfortunately, I don't, I know that the road isn't quite straight. I don't know, just because it's, I don't know, it's not in the middle. Not necessarily all roads have to be built in the middle of the right of way. And then to address the property values and taxes, again, we don't have any proof or any studies that have shown that telecommunication towers will reduce property values. In this case, unfortunate that their purchase agreements are contingent on telecommunications tower going in. But I would also, you know, ask you or staff to maybe direct us in the right, in the right manner to understand the planning commission as to their review that they would conduct on an application for a telecommunications tower. Is it just, in our understanding, is that you are to look at and review with regards to county code and regulations and how we can meet those. And to that point, we need the regulations. If we don't, then you would consider our application incomplete. Your staff has reviewed all our documents and stated it is complete. I believe that the county commissioners are, is the appropriate body that would consider if property values or taxation is part of their decision. So with that, I'll turn that over. You guys, if you have any additional questions.
I got one question for you. So this parcel, when you, of your rings, you picked this as one of the best ones. If there was no roads there, what would you do? If these people evidently built with their, with their own private money? And so what would be your answer to that?
Commissioner, typically if there's an area that is underserved with an access road, if there's a right of way that's been planted and there's no road, and if that's the site we're pursuing, we would work with the county to make sure that we could build access to that tower site. If there wasn't a public right of way dedicated for our access, we would work with the private property owner to obtain access from a public right of way.
I bet you wouldn't do it for 10 grand. What's your offer? I mean, you know, unfortunately, I'm on a township board for 36 years. You know, we just put in one color for 36, or yeah, about 26,000.
And commissioners, it was, you know, a way for us to provide some funds for repairs of future damage to a way that one in likely will not be caused by the construction or the maintenance of this tower site. We have spoken with the property owners of this particular property, and they currently do not, it's our understanding that they do not provide funds to the HOA road maintenance. So right now, as we move forward with this application, there would be funds in that one-time payment towards the repairs and maintenance needed for the roadway.
I spoke with today our highway superintendent, Mike Slachek. He has some pretty significant concerns about this road and particularly the culverts. And he sent me an email to me a cost estimate to rebuild that road to county standards, which is what it would need to be. And it was over $400,000. And that includes, the whole road has to be completely reshaped, excavation, culverts, over $40,000 in gravel alone, signs, road control, engineering costs itself is $80,000. And so, you know, if he is concerned and if our highway superintendent is concerned, that makes me concerned.
But the county does not maintain it at this time?
No, they don't. But if we're going to authorize use, I mean, you know, it's just
Well, I agree.
Yeah, I think we're on the same side of this. If we're going to say you can use that road, guess what? We own it. And we've got to keep maintaining it. And that's kind of what the highway guy is saying. If we're going to allow anybody to use it as they want, then we should be maintaining it. And not only is it about 400, over 400,000 to build that to standards because it's not the standard, it's too narrow. Then we got between 20 and 40,000 dollars a year in upkeep maintenance and snow. Those types of things.
Beam valve minimum maintenance. It says minimum maintenance.
Right. How long is that road though? It's half mile?
Oh, yeah.
It probably did a little bit better than half mile. If you take it all the way up the corners, it's better, around three quarters of a mile. Have you been on the road?
Mr. I'd like to address.
Yes.
Again, just to remind everyone that the construction of a tower, depending on whether, probably a couple of weeks where we would have trucks. Probably different than the construction of a home where you have trucks. Probably more often times than that. And again, then the service staff is mainly just a pickup. And it would be maybe once a quarter. And, you know, we're trying to be, we understand the concerns of the road. So we're trying to be good community partner with a $10,000 offer. If that's, if that's offensive, I'm sorry. We're just trying to do what we feel like was the right thing. But again, just if you keep it in perspective with what we're talking about, couple of weeks with larger trucks and then a pickup once a quarter, I don't think it's that much traffic on a road.
What would this tower cost, Bill, for a second?
You know, generally, we say 100 to 200,000. I don't have that, but somewhere in there. The lot of them are very, you know, topography, height, center, but somewhere, I'm going to trust what Ryan says because he knows a lot more about that.
I'm just kind of curious, comparison.
Yeah, and again, if that's an offensive amount, I'm sorry. We were just trying to find something that elates some concerns about the smaller use of road that we will, you know, or usage that we'll have on the road.
But they don't have approved.
I'm sorry, but.
They don't have approved.
Yeah, and I, I'm sorry. I thought there was an HOA, a place, a homeowners association. And that's something that we would work with the county on to see.
We don't have it either. It's just, it's literally a section line. It's just like near Joe Field.
It's kind of a dirt trail.
So commissioners, the, my understanding, and I know that there's a few other folks here that have mentioned the HOA. There is an HOA that's set up. It's not on, or this property is not part of this. So they said there's covenants, right? My understanding was there's covenants as part of that HOA. And they have funds that they're guessing, I don't know, that they're giving monies from homeowners. By road.
That's probably the road.
I believe this is advanced.
That's for Cedar Hills Road.
Cedar Hills, guys are worth playing. So now it's advanced. You're good, right?
Commissioners, we're almost ready to go around that herd. Well, I guess not to get too far in the weeds about the payment it would be to, but again, this is a conditional use permit. And that can be placed as a condition that we provide those funds. The county would then distribute them for the maintenance of this road. I know that they don't, you know, necessarily, I think there's a way around that. Again, we haven't entered into an agreement at this point, but it can be conditioned on the permit.
These guys sign both?
They're in the back.
They're in your package. Two foot by two foot would be.
Commissioners, there's typically signs that are informing people that come to the site of our emissions.
Number two, outpost of the homes.
Those signs are placed on the tower and typically on the fence of the tower.
Just the fence around the dock.
That's correct because there's no setback distances that any residents should be, you know, concerned with of their homes.
Now, one major concern I have, where you used a drone instead of balloon on that test. And my question is this, was it in the, was it, was it advertised in the newspaper? You were going to run that test with a drone instead of a balloon?
Commissioner, I don't have a direct answer for that. It's something that we could, I go back to my team and to the county and the consultant. But my understanding that based on the information that we gave them on the balloon drone study, that it was acceptable to meet the code regulations of the county.
The county advisor accepted it or the county accepted? There's two differences there.
I can address part of that. I have sent Commissioner Henry copies, if you can provide copies. It's always from the paper talking about the drone test. In the past, and before your time, but the consultant has addressed the issue that the balloon test really isn't valid in South Dakota anymore. And that was one of the recommendations that he had to do a drone test versus a balloon test.
Okay, I understand that. I understand why you don't do the balloon test. But was it the drone test advertised in the paper?
Yes.
People know the county, was it?
Yes, it was. I'm not sending copies to Commissioner Henry. Yes, former mayor.
Because according to the lawyer, was there, was there copies of the advertisement in the paper?
I didn't research that issue, but what I can tell you is the age of it.
If you, if you need to talk, then you can talk at public comment if that is needed. If anybody's going to speak, it needs to be up here to the microphones that it's recorded properly so the public can view it online. So.
Do you want me to come up now or like? No, later.
Later, please, thank you. Go ahead.
What are the possibilities of ever going over 199 foot?
Commissioners, if it's part of the conditional use permit, that the conditional use permit is for 199-foot tower, that would be the maximum height the tower can be built at.
But then would be a light up?
Based on our review and the documents we have from the FCC, there is, it will not be a lit tower.
The way I look at this is if we turn to Section 1805, number five, we say before any conditional uses decided, the planning commission show data written findings certified, certified compliance with specific rules governing individual conditional uses and satisfactory provision and arrangements that we make considering the following were applicable. Only turn to A ingress and egress to property and proposed structures there on, with particular reference to automotive density and being used traffic flow control and excess in its fire. Catastrophe is I, I can't say this and I, I don't know if anybody else can say if there's proper ingress or egress to this site. And is it going to be a safety issue with big trucks going on there? It's apparently a safety issue now where the roads are too small and too narrow. I've actually been out on that road. The culverts are definitely not built to standard. They're just a couple of inches under the gravel. So I guess I don't feel comfortable saying that it meets the ingress, the ingress compatibility. And neither does our highway superintendent. Somebody's got something they'd like to tell me different than I'm, I'm gearing it. But by that, I don't know if we can approve this.
I agree.
And then if this would be anywhere else, if this would be along Highway 50, this would be on an established road that the county owns, I would say we would probably have to approve it. But if the ingress egress is not properly done, and this isn't, because AT&amp;T, this isn't something of the county. This is from 20 years ago that that road was built improperly and this issue has never been resolved. But I, I don't feel it has property received this. Unless somebody else has something they'd like to bring up. So I don't know if we can even approve, even if we wanted to.
Commissioners, I would ask if that is in your findings and that is the concern, I would ask that, I know that we had tabled it from last month, but I believe that we can go back and prepare some additional materials in order to address the right-of-way concerns. So again, I would ask that it would be tabled if that is your concern, that we be given the chance to, again, address it. Before the question was, we don't believe it's right-of-way, is it, is it not? And we confirm that. So and now when it goes back to development of a certain parcel, I guess it appears that if a tower is built, the road needs to be repaired. But if somebody builds a home or different type of use out there, then it's okay. So, so we just need to make sure that we're able to address it, to make sure that we're addressing your concerns. And if that's the case, I would ask that you tabled this, this item again, so we can at least have additional information for you.
Could you also explore options that maybe are closer to Highway 50 that SiteP talks about in 2014 that you had explored before, a mile and a half north? Is that possibility that you might entertain in other sites that's farther away from residents? I understand that you're looking for coverage between your two towers, but that's not saying that coverage couldn't be improved in another location that isn't impacting so many people in such a detrimental way. I mean, we're talking about people losing the ability to sell their property. Multiple people. I mean, multiple lots that are being compromised. And I feel that that is a substantial financial hit for someone that invested a substantial amount of property believing that they could sell it and now it's unsaled. So I know that that is not your problem. But if we can move that tower to a location where it does not impact so many residents, you won't have a whole crowd of people angry at you either. I understand that this is what you had planned. But if you would be so kind as to talk to your engineers and see if there is another possible site, that would be very, very much appreciated.
Mr. We can look into that. If it's outside the ring though, it probably won't work because it's, we have rings identified because each has to be certain distance from each other. And then they all build on a network that way. And I'm not explaining it very well. But if it's outside the ring, it probably won't.
You've got to get your coverage. But here's our 20, March 6, 2019 memo, exhibit four. And here's one of the concerns I have, I guess, is how we got whoever that. Because we certainly have an obligation to, to not just allow you, but to try to help you cover your, your gap in coverage. And I understand that. I may be going out on a limb, but it, nowhere does it say that we, we have to guide you or help you in doing that at your lowest possible cost. And there's other sites indicated in this letter, one being Northwestern. And I'd like to see, I'd like to see some documentation showing that that site either does not work, structurally does not work, or that you cannot build it and replace that tower location, being it's an existing tower in, in, in the light of the public and in the eye of the public already and acceptable to them. To me, that would be the priority site. Given this statement that it, it would would be a viable solution for into Jim. Jim, Jim Martin.
Commissioner, is that the, are you referring to the Northwestern? And we, because it's, yeah, it's our understanding and they may not be part of the packet that that then did not, was not structurally sound enough for our equipment?
And that was one of my concerns. We've heard that they didn't answer the phone was one of the reasons essentially. And then another one was that it likely would not structurally sound. And that, and that may be, but I would like to see documentation on that. And I guess, and then the other question is, if it's not, is that still a viable location? And maybe it is a 300-foot tower there. It's currently, I think, 250. And part of the reason I bring that up as a concern is because this, according to this, the 190-foot tower in this location, to get the, the coverage that AT&amp;T is requesting and needs, you're also going to be back for additional five small cell sites coming along the road. So which option is a better overall solution, I guess, is what I.
Living in one tower tower?
If it's in a location where it already exists. And, you know, I'm not the RF engineer on this and I, it just seems to me that this isn't the only option. The only option. And, and I do have concerns with, with this, the road. And to be quite honest, myself, the, I understand the build process is going to be a shorter time. And it's probably not much different than building a house. One concern I do have is you start putting fiber optics and, and large power in that right-of-way. Who's going to be, you're going to have to go under the road at some point because the road is, it zigzags on that right-of-way. And so that, as further development comes, what's going to be the long-term solution? Or, or the fiber and the, and the power would be one of the concerns. And, you know, then you go to 1805 of the ingress egress.
E2 utilities.
Utilities, but angle at H. And all of this is part of our conditional use process. You know, Section 25, the meat and min. And the nuts and holes, this is a gatekeeper. And general compatibility with the base of properties within that district is unprecedented. And, and I'm not saying that this project can't go forward at some point, but that it's, it just seems like there's a lot of hurdles with this location. And I question if it is the best site, given that there's potential alternatives. Along with, I know Mr. Burge brought up, and it caught my attention too, this site of one and a half mile to the north was explored and then I really don't have any information on what happened to that one. But it looked like it was viable. There was an attempt to make an application for one there. So there was approval at one point. And then it sounds like reading through these other letters, the funding was, AT&amp;T found it wasn't financially viable. And then what I'm gathering is with the first net contract that, that this is now a more viable solution. And I understand that. And just given all of these, sort of like, why should this be the right site?
I agree with you, Joe. Another thing too, it looked to me just a little bit like you guys found a exit creek that's a level residential district and it works. But it doesn't work for a lot of people. I mean, it's just, and it's really not an ag district. It, it, it's not farmland. It's, it's, it just gives you a good view of the south. But I just don't feel it's viable either.
Mr. What?
Yeah, the ingress egress.
One of the things that we have changed from 2014 is the search trim. Commissioner, one of the things that we have changed from two thousand fourteen is the search ring. We have changed based on our conversations with the first metas. And, and where public safety decided, because the lake area is very important for public responders to be able to have a contact. So I, I suspect that the search ring changed from twenty fourteen. We hadn't gotten a warrantable contract in twenty fourteen. We were awarded the contract in twenty sixteen and then South Dakota opted in in twenty seventeen. But we worked throughout twenty seventeen. Um, once we were awarded the contract, we worked out throughout twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen with the state officials to identify what they thought we needed to do in the lake area was a very important part. And so the search ring probably changed based on that.
Sure. And I, and I can understand that it is, uh, I talked to, um, some first responders and, and, you know, they said that, you know, it would be nice to fill that coverage and have that. And, um, the, and that may be, that may account for the the kind of missing link that was one and a half miles north, but, um, the first that contract was in place with Northwestern Tower Site was evaluated or and I don't mean to be sarcastic, but maybe it was lack of evaluation of the way I see it. The way it's been presented is that it's kind of like you knocked on the door and nobody answered and, and moved on. And, and I've gotten that question and, and comment from a lot of residents is how come there's no doc, what kind of documentation? You know, is this truly the site that end all be all because, um, and I would agree with them that there's an existing tower and it's your engineer has said that that would be a viable solution. And I think, yeah, actually didn't have to put as many small cell sites afterwards by underwriting that. And to me, that's the path of least resistance.
Commissioner, if we could, and it, this could be, you know, something that we just didn't produce tonight. That's something that we could produce to show you that that structural integrity was not enough for our equipment. That'd be helpful to have the commissioner see that prior to you out taking action on this tonight.
Well, are, is there a time limit? Don't we have a certain number of days where we have to do something or it's automatically approved?
And on that, I mean, I would like to see a, a report saying that that's structurally insufficient, but I also would like to see, um, you know, I, I don't know exactly how this works because you can't force somebody to put a tower on their land, but but I would, I would certainly think that something could be incredible to, to rebuild on that existing power site. And then I guess I have one other question, not knowing how all of this lays out, but it sounds like Verizon has, has suitable coverage. And what is Co-Lay locating on some of their towers throughout? It uses any coverage?
Commissioner, we always want to co-locate if we can because it's a lot, lot cheaper and a lot quicker. So if, if we are not co-locating on an existing power, it's a different reason behind that. Because we always want to do that. Um, it's substantially less expensive and substantially quicker for us. So that's always our first priority. So apparently wherever they are, we work to help them for us.
Or you maybe had that close several.
It's been, we're co-locating there and then we have to do another one somewhere. Back to the benefits. But I, I know, I'm shocked that that's always our first, first priority.
Uh, back to you, Gary. Is there a timeline where under first, something like this?
The consultant stated in the past that, yes, there can be times when there's certain time limits that are required due to FCC regulations. We can certainly, uh, talk to Mark, yeah.
I would think if it's requested by them, that would be wait.
Correct.
But what, what would be, what would be? What do you guys want? Do you guys want to try to, uh, give us some more information? What do you guys want?
Commissioners, you know, I think at this point it would be, um, it'll work for us to go back and take a look at some of these concerns, um, you know, whether it's providing new documentation from Northwest Energy. I know that our site act staff, um, does their diligence when it comes to researching other sites. Um, I know other sites that we're co-locating on where AT, excuse me, where Verizon is at currently in, um, in the city of Yankton and in Yankton County. So that is, uh, you know, as stated, a priority. Um, as it is much easier for us to co-locate. Um, it's, AT&T isn't in the business of owning towers. Uh, they're in the, they're in the business for providing services. Uh, so we can definitely go back and take a look at, um, Northwestern Energy and apply that documentation. Uh, we can also, you know, it's putting together a little bit more detailed map of the, of the property owners that we spoke to. Um, and then, uh, providing some additional information, um, on the concerns regarding the, the bookway. I think those are the items that have come out just recently. Um, and if, if there's any, any additional information, um, I think that we could, uh, gather that and come back to you.
And if possible, explore, explore the site a mile and a half to the north.
When you say to a mile and a half north, do you mean the Western site?
The the site that you, the site that you explored in twenty fourteen that was referenced.
Uh, we can, we can take a look at that site as well.
That'd be lovely.
Hey, Gary, what would you recommend for us? Uh, you think it's best we, we, uh, address this again at another meeting or what, what would you say? Making decisions tonight, was there?
Any, any comments from the state's attorneys at this point?
I mean, we, we will.
And I would, uh, I would certainly, I think it makes sense what they spoke about that, that, um, give them an opportunity to table and come back next month and, and see if there's anything more they can add to.
Is that's what they have requests is.
Correct. Yeah, we, we want to work with you guys. You know, we want better connectivity and internet service and better service for our, our emergency, um, service personnel. We want all the same things. We just, we have to, you know, the ingress egress is the big one to begin. I'm sure we can include other, other things as well.
I think the general compatibility with the basic properties is a is a challenge. And I'm sure you've run into that more than once. But it, it certainly is a concern. Commissioner, are you in motion then?
Yes. Unless there's anything else you wanted to ask.
Would you like another motion?
Um, commissioners, if, uh, we would definitely, um, if you're able to table it this evening, we would, uh, of course, it's part of that.
Thank you.
I move the first call for one month, sitting on this.
Grant the continuance for one month. Okay, do you have a motion? Do we have a second? Okay, motion and a second?
Can I have a question? If this is a continuation for a month and the, the site that they continue to consider is still in the same location, will we all receive notifications so that we can prepare as well?
Typically, no, a lot of continuation. It, it's just assumed that these discussions will be at the next. This would be your, this would be your notice, uh, from I'm not aware, but my understanding legally, if you have notice of the first meeting, then it's continued. You have notice.
The reason I ask is because we were actually given a, an additional notice for tonight's meeting. So to me, it seems logical to give an additional notice. But for, for everyone here, I think it is necessary for them to know that if this comes up again, that they also need to come in support of their land and their property and their road and their homeowners areas, um, to support their concerns. Um, you'll have to wait for public comment. We haven't even voted on that motion. All right. We have a motion and a second on the table.
Before you make a motion.
Before you make a motion.
Yeah, but I have a concern in that I've got people that want to buy land and they won't buy land to make stuff into this decision.
Okay, the only thing that's on the table right now that we're voting on is whether we're going to make a continuance to next month.
However, the timeframe.
Oh, yeah, ma'am, the time to public comment, you got to wait till the end. I'm sorry.
Can both of you give you more comments?
We gave you lots of time to comment.
We have more now. Can we, can we table this on condition or let's say this site is not available to use? They can find a new spot.
I'm sorry.
All right.
We'd be here all night. We gave everyone a chance to speak. We gave people chances to speak once. Okay, I'm sorry, but we have a motion and a second on the table. We need to move forward on that motion. Voca vote when you're ready, please.
And, and the motion is to.
The motion is to table until next month. So if this motion passes, it means that you can all come back next month and hear what they have to say. Okay, and you will have the opportunity to speak again. So that is what we're voting on right now. We're not voting to approve or disapprove. We're just voting to move it to next month and give more time for them to address the concerns that you spoke about tonight. Okay, whenever you're ready, chances of, Schultz, yes. Williams?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Arms?
Yes.
Barco?
Yes.
Clemish?
Yes.
Michael?
Yeah.
All right, motion, Gary. So this item will be on the agenda for the second Tuesday of next month. And okay, next item on the agenda is a flat for lots sixteen of Sundance Ridge, located in the west half of section twelve, T ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval of the flat?
Dave, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
All right. Voca vote when you're ready. Okay, voice vote. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion here.
Are we done? Are we going to stay with this until four? Will we finish reviewing this stuff and this next month or?
Yeah.
Well, I guess my intention, I was gonna have to have my, my projector is just to run through this without getting into the weeds on anything. We'll, we'll.
Just, just the, the highlights.
I guess the main, main thing too, though is whether we do that now or later, I think is okay with me, but I would like to lock down and debate and figure it out in future. To have a, a joint meeting. How the commissioners will find it. I'm going to, Joe.
Why don't we, um,
propose changes.
Let's look at it for a month and then discuss it.
I think we should review this and then.
Yeah.
Right, now is the point, let's not get into the weeds, to just give a, just a real high level overview how it flows and highlight how what, what the changes are or what the proposals would be. Before we spend six hours in one evening arguing over two words, get to the high level. And, and again, before we really dig into anything, I would like to have a, again, have a meeting with commissioners and planning on building the vendors. Um, because there, uh, there, there was a there was communication flowing, but it wasn't getting to everybody. And so I think it's important that everybody here and everybody on the plan are on the county commission. Kind of aware of what's happening, what, what people are thinking and trying to set this up for success.
Did we even have a voiceover during this?
Yeah, and that was, I guess, well, my point today was to just give you the, the structure. Rather than getting, okay, what exactly are the setbacks? It's more so, because there's some significant kind of changes in how it flows. So it wasn't really to get into definitions, get into, um, the number for the setback, to get into animal units per se. It's just the.
I guess, it'd be in ten o'clock most of us have been up for quite a while. I don't think it's going to be very productive.
And I'd say let's take a month and.
I would rather.
One, one thing that I have a problem with is that I thought as planning commissioners, our job was to bring things to the commissioners, not ask what the commission, what can we do to appease the commissioners. I do not believe that. And you've attacked a couple times about how I changed my mind. Do you know why I changed my mind then? Because I have talked to my constituents. I've talked to four hundred acre builders. And they said, we don't want something like that felt sixty percent by the way, probably like. That's why I changed my mind. And I've asked people, what do you want? A hog barn, a, a, a quarter mile or a, or a, or a house or a dwelling? And they said hog barn every time. They do not want the, the family dwelling, anything like that. So I, you know, there's, I feel that we need to bring the idea to, to, and the other three of you, not collaborate. I, I don't think that's our, our job. Am I wrong or, or wrong or not?
And, and Zane, I'm sure you, you had a proposal about just adding, uh, a real simple one about just adding like a class F to a quarter mile. I almost think that that's the way to go. Something real simple because it started out of, you know, we need to redo everything. And the more we change, the more we disagree, the more things don't get done.
I said that.
Yeah, no, you, you did. And, and honestly, I think it'd be best, maybe all of us bring something separate. You know, I, I think a simple solution might be better than a complex one.
I have a lot of people very, very upset and think it is ludicrous for this fifty animal this thing. And nobody's going to enforce it. All it is doing is, just like I said before, it's throwing in the twenty-four hundred head, uh, the, the little nurseries. So it can't get into the class F. That's all this, this, all this money that this fifty had before. Nobody's going to go out and count if somebody's got fifty-two thousand kids. We know that.
And I agree, Zane, that's why I'm asking. It's heaven. So call it perception, reality, or whatever you, you want, but through this commission, we sent up uh, changes to the accounting commission, knowing hundred percent that it had no chance of passing. And I don't know that all of that information was flowing to all the planning commissioners.
Part, part of that though is the commissioners. Maybe because of, because of not everybody paying here or?
No, because they, I don't know how the game's played. What's that? I thought they had chips.
You what?
I thought they had chips as well. All right, but as Sharon stated in the meeting, she is, she, I talked to Dan about that he was relaying everything through planning and zoning. And that she was definitely not as supportive. And that she was definitely not as supportive as the animal units deserved to be. I had said the same thing.
And, and when I asked Sherry seven different times what she wanted to see at the meeting, she refused to, to to say anything with that next. So boys are bad to your promise. We need to figure out where the, where the problem is before we can move, move forward with it. That's what I would say.
So that, rather than the he said, she said, what I've opened, we've done it in the past and we all actually thought really good idea and we should have multiple, although it never happened, but we have a starting point. A little review. And then we bring in the county commissioner and say, is this something that, that you would support? This, this document, this structure, is this something you would support? We understand there's gonna be tweaks this way, that way, and that way. And hopefully the answer is yes, and then we move forward and maybe we get, you know, some things identified or finding an issue or do whatever. We have another meeting that theoretically, how we say this, the direction we're taking. What do you think?
Okay, but essentially what you're doing then is you're bypassing the binding commission.
Yeah.
You're, you're, you're kind of turning, turning the, the county commission into the planning department.
No, the, the county commission, the intent of those meetings is not for the county commission to interject change.
To tell them.
What I said is, is the point of it is for them to not to interject changes and say, well, I don't want this, that, or I want that. It's more so to just say overall, we're, we're after the direction and that's all. So we don't spend the next 18 months working on something that is not gonna happen. I don't think anybody else wants to spend 18 more months sitting here.
Well, here, here's my situation, you know, ambulance task force, road task force, all of those, those members were appointed and they were coming together and presented it and the county commission at those, at that point, trusted those committees enough to either support or reject them. And in those cases, they all, they all passed. You know, like Zane said, it's the planning commission's job to, you know, say yes or no and, and why.
Present something.
But, but the thing, well, we had something that was presented, it was denied. Why don't we get a report that said, the reason I denied this is because of this. And the reason I denied...
I think I made a thorough report of that, Dan. At, at the county commission, you know, Sherry gave a very detailed report of why.
And why don't sure that's, and that goes throughout, so that's not, that's not accurate.
I'll, I'll, here's another thing, I'll, I'll, maybe with all the planning commissioners and, and, and a lot of area farmers to get their input, our constituents and acreage. I don't disagree, innit? I mean, this is overall still, I really have heard some kind of harmonious. It's a pop. Exactly. And I don't disagree then, and it's idiot stuff. My original vision was to have more town halls throughout this process. That's been limited, but yeah, we, we have been talking about these changes for two and a half years. And I certainly hope people pass that years. I've been talking with people I know I am. And I try not to just talk to people who I know are gonna support one item and not the other. I did try to get all the aspects of it and tried to put that in the notes.
Okay, well, let us review these notes and then...
So, so if we come up, excuse me, if, if, if we could come up with a meeting, the whole planning and zoning and area acreage owners and farmers get together, would that be something that would interest you guys to listen to?
Yes.
I'll make it happen.
Okay, well, let's do that after we get a chance.
I'll make it happen. I'm game. Very, and I'm game, what would be the?
We need to have some...
Just to listen and, and, and sometimes farmers and, and sometimes acreage owner too, we're the worst ones that wanna speak, especially in this world. If we could meet on Stockland, they have a lot of farmers that actually even like, man, maybe have their suggestions on a note pad. Or, or get on a piece of paper and say, what do you, so what do you, here may be a solution to this. What do you guys have thought?
I think if we do, it should be like a special planning commission here, not necessarily, you know, this is a neutral seats.
No, no, please, that, that, I, I don't, that, it could be moderated.
Yeah, but we suggested out at Stockland, that's, not everybody's gonna wanna go to Stockland's.
Not everybody can fit in this building, but there's space, so.
Well, if we can have another venue too, we could use that high fire station number two or something like that.
So is there gonna be a, and I'm not saying that, that's wrong either. But would it have to be spaced limited and, and stop art out? You had it in high school, wasn't it? The way? Oh, it's, it's, it's 1,400 people. Kind of quality.
Do you think they'll let us in high school and everything go?
They let, depends on what's scheduled. You look at their schedule, Wednesday night's usually a good night because that's the one day for the excursion nights, I mean, they can't have activity.
And, you know, and here's the one, here's the one thing that we all, everybody here realizes, we gotta change, right? I mean, but how is that change gonna happen? We have to do something. We might not agree with exactly how that happens, but I think everybody agrees we got some things we gotta address. Particularly with class F and the setbacks with those. I think we're, does anybody not agree with that?
No, I, I...
So, I mean, we, we do. And so it's, it's, it's helpful when people give us ideas. When people say, well, I just don't agree with that. And you say, well, why? Well, I don't know. I don't, you know, not that you're gonna see that. That's not helpful. I don't agree with this. Why don't we try this? That's, that's a helpful thing. So I think that you shouldn't know what the biggest concerns are.
That's what I'm saying, exactly. I mean, we should, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying it's not a good idea to have, to have kind of an open.
A town hall.
Open town halls, I feel. I'm not saying that. But I am saying that if we don't know what people are feeling, then we have... What I'm saying is that maybe get, and, and address that situation and, and let, let some of them speak about it. You know, and so some of you guys that aren't aware, haven't heard some of these concerns, so. Well, I, I go back there, I've only been here a month. I know this last couple, last big meeting we had, when a lot of people showed up. We may, they came up with ideas that they're concerned, and then boss, you know, you, right? And I, I do agree with Joe's, with that, I mean, and I'll get it right. I do agree with it this much. We can't just have, I don't think it can be wide open. We have to have a focus of some type to talk about. That's where we're gonna do a follow-up now. What's the focus going to be? You never have a meeting where you don't know what you're gonna talk about. Right, and it'd be section five, is that, that, that's what we have to have our focus, because that's our main, main problem for a lot of... That's very... Livestock producers are concerned about their responsibility and their right to stand on their own. Grandfather clauses. Grandfather clauses, people who, and it's not to take each other, but I've talked a lot of livestock producers that have lived in the country or out in the rural community for 60 plus years and have like raised livestock to a whole height. And they, they are concerned with, with people's welfare. And there, there are very many people that are, that are saying absolutely not, but there's a lot of people that have concerns of, and and their property rights, both our livestock producers and property rights for all of us. And we continue, continue to hear various requests on acreage sites, we need us to be property rights thing as well. And I, I understand the concern, why it is 20 acres. As far as trying to keep country, country. I mean, that's what, that's the bottom line, that's why it's there. And I, and I think we've addressed that concern and still not hear various requests, one to two times a year on acreage sites.
So, Zane, in talking to your people, what, what are they, I mean, 20 acres, I think we all realize that has to come down.
I would say that, I mean, that, 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 that's what I'm trying to show my people.
But, but I mean, the reality, but then you buy something in one direction, but based off zero.
You, you, you know what, you know what, and I hold it wrong and I should have denied that because if an existing farm wants a child to come home, if I couldn't feed my son 20 acres or daughters that didn't come home, it's not gonna be a viable farming operation in today's world. I don't care what you say. I mean, it, it...
But that's not an issue. It's, it's fine.
No, but I'm gonna use you on that one. Probably my wrong one, it's the bank one.
That's what I'm talking about.
If, if they own, if they, if you gotta feed a 20 acre of land and, and, and the farmer, farmer, the dad took lifetime earnings off or part-time earnings, you're telling me the bank wouldn't give you, I own money on 100 acres, I don't know.
Zane, Zane, they will, but your interest rate is much higher. Here's the reason, here's the reason.
That's hard.
Here is, here is the reason why, just because.
There are a lot of things that I grew up my life that is real hard.
So you, you build a $250,000, $300,000 house and then you have, you know, 20 acres of, of ground it. God knows how much. You, you're looking at a half million chunk of, of land and those guys, something happens, they miss their payment. It's really hard to sell that chunk of land in 20 acres.
You know what, Dan?
And, and that, that's the reason.
Come back to the farm. I lived in a $13,000 mobile home for 17 years to make a start. If they wanna make a start, I don't really think they need a $300,000 house. They made one one.
And there's this conversation.
Sure, that's, that's our problem. Trying to have people to hope, my whole point isn't, I don't think they should have little mobile. I don't think that they should have to get a different financing. I don't think they should have this, what the variance says. Right. The variance request says that a financial hardship is now.
But, but if we're, if we're gonna follow the variance for that, then we need to follow the variance for all variance requests.
We should.
But we didn't tonight when we approved the variance out by the way. If you, if you would have applied that same principle that you did to provide to this one tonight, you would have approved it.
Unless the change is, we talked about the change this, this 16, but he's not furthering the topic more.
Well, but hardship then, I guess. It's, it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Then, okay, so I guess I could have been through this whole thing right now.
Yeah, you always think that, but that's not what I'm looking at. You're sneaking out on the 10th, 13th.
You just ask people to take this all, read with an open mind. I can guarantee you that there's gonna be a lot of things in here that you don't like. And there's gonna be a lot of things in here that all of the other side doesn't like. And I think it's a way of compromising.
I think really though, so I think the rock and art place on this whole thing is this article five is exactly like it looks to tonight. We've got something going on. There was something that triggered a lot of emotion. It brought a lot of people out of the woodwork and got everything all screwed up. And now we're sitting here between that and those people trying to get something happy, you know, and knowing that those people are gonna get in the car and run back to Indianapolis and these people are gonna be in Florida. You gotta figure out a way to, how do you make that work? And I think the fact that the, that this was exactly the same thing went on a larger scale and drags on and, and you're trying to, you're trying to appease everybody, but in reality, you gotta really look at the long-term effect of what it does to those people that are in that system.
Right.
And trying to make a living doing it.
And that's what I'm trying to do, yeah, because with, with the word article five, it's really not an issue. It's a bill that's an issue, it has to be. It's only been an issue twice in, I mean, really, two, in 2005, 2006, and then in 2017, 18. Really the only times it's been an issue. And to me, that doesn't pass the test of only two times we've really been faced with all of that controversy, it, the hornets, but it needs to be addressed. And, and the answer is not, I mean, you do have to figure out, think about how it affects those people. I think we, you know, I don't wanna just throw everything else that's been discussed. I assume it's quite a bit of it. This, I guess, is something that's kind of sensitive and I'll, I'll shut up and I just ask people to read this with a little open mind and, and consider. How's it going? One minute, one minute, do you return?
I'll check it. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Have a nice trip.